City Council Public Hearing now come to order. Counselors Kadim?
Here.
Kamara?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Here.
Raposo?
Yep.
Washington?
Here.
President La Libbidi-Labo?
Here.
You have a motion to open?
Motion to open.
Second. Motion to open the hearing made by Counselor Raposo, seconded by Counselor Pereira. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item one, Mass Electric Company. Before item one, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Item one, Massachusetts Electric Company for an underground conduit location as follows: Hartwell Street, National Grid is petitioning to install six five-inch PVC from existing manhole six to a new switchgear manhole 1-2. Manhole six is on the east side of Hartwell Street going towards the property at 60 Hartwell Street, in accordance with Plan Number 29748761. Are there any proponents wishing to speak? Any proponents want to come down to the table? Please give your name and address for the record. Right at the table, and peek into one of the microphones, please.
Have a seat, have a seat. Feel at home.
I don't know if that's working. That is working?
Yes.
My name is Adam Dion. I'm here on behalf of National Grid with Power Engineers. And essentially, they're installing a new switchgear, so we need to install a duct bank from one existing manhole to the next to help rearrange some of the load and help a reliable service for more of the businesses down there. So essentially, it's replacing all the cable, and we just need to install a new duct bank from one manhole to the next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor in Seat Five, did you have a question?
Yeah, how big is the cut, and how deep is the cut, and how are you gonna patch it up so people of Ford will don't get mad at you?
The, there, so there'll be a barricade around, so they can be detoured if anyone needs to walk around the sidewalk. And they'll, they'll repair the sidewalk, but it has to be a minimum of 36 inches below grade. And then, they'll just patch it up. It's eight, it's eight to 10 feet long underneath the sidewalk. So the sidewalk will be closed, but they can, they'll have barricades to detour around it to...
You said from manhole to manhole.
Yep, from...
All the manholes are in the...
Manhole s...
In the middle of the street?
Manhole six is on the edge of the street.
It's on the edge?
On the, yep, right before the sidewalk. And then, the next manhole that we're trying to go to, where they're installing the switchgear, is actually in the lot of 60 Hartwell Street. So it's going from the very edge of the road, underneath the sidewalk, into the open lot. So it's not really impacting a lot of the road.
So how are we doing the road?
It'll, it'll be the same thing. They'll, it's the manhole six, the existing manhole, is at the very edge of the road. So they're, they're just going to detour around, they'll probably close the road for a little bit of where it is, but I, I'm not the construction, so I don't know how they're going to do that. But it's at the very edge of...
From the curb to the end of the cutting the street, how big is that?
The entire trench should be 10 feet long max. It, it's the manhole...
How wide is it, how wide is it? 12 inches?
12 in, 12 inches.
12 inches wide?
Yep.
And that's gonna be covered the right way?
Yep.
All the same project, the same thing, basically?
What was that?
Okay, we'll get the number two. We, we get number one, and you can go on.
Okay.
I, dude, just get it done right, so we don't hear anybody complaining.
It will be done, it will be done right.
Okay, no problem.
You yield, Counselor?
Yeah, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Thank you. Any opponent, any other proponents wishing to speak? Any opponents wishing to speak?
Motion to close.
Motion to close the hearing made by Counselor Raposo, seconded by Counsel Vice President Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Item two?
Motion to open.
Motion to open the hearing made by Counselor Raposo?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item two, Massachusetts Electric Company for an underground conduit location as follows: Pearl Street and Spring Street, National Grid is petitioning to break into MH8 and install approximately 21 feet of six four-inch conduit from new pad 3-99 to MH8, and install approximately 82 feet of two four-inch conduit from MH8 to riser pole P3. They plan to also install approximately 82 feet of five four-inch conduit from MH8, and install approximately 120 feet of three four-inch conduit from P3 to HH3-2. National Grid will also install 39 feet of five four-inch conduit from pad 3-99 to sidewalk to intercept customer conduit, in accordance with Plan Number 30575673. Are there any proponents wishing to speak? No, you're a proponent. You're already at the table. If you would give your name and address for the record, please.
Al Galvin, Design Engineer, National Grid, Hope Del Office. So basically, this is a, an upgrade job for an apartment complex, and in doing so, they need to install a transformer. This particular transformer, the best spot was the parking lot that they own across the street there, Spring. So they gotta come out of an existing manhole nearby, run the primary cable that's necessary to feed that transformer, and make some upgrades to balance the loads in that, that particular span there. So primarily, I believe, the east side of that, that road, that'll be affected for a couple days, however long it takes to, you know, get that installed.
Thank you. Counselor in Seat Five.
Repairs, sidewalks and street, that's gonna be done?
Yeah, everything's made as-is, brought up, whatever they have to break into, they'll bring it up to, you know, current code and as-new.
Who's doing your construction on that?
That'd be the, well, the underground crews out of, well, in this case, it'd be a civil, a civil team that, that contract out.
Local?
Yes, well, within the, you know, jurisdiction, yeah.
And they got specs for this and everything?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yep, sketches have been sent to them, to their supervisors, their crews, so they can look into it. They do surveys beforehand, do pre-checks.
All right, we'll watch, see what's going on. I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in Seat Six, Counsel Pereira.
I'm just gonna add that when I saw these, I know that the electric company is working with the city engineer, Dan Agia, so that all the specs and everything that be done be done correctly, so that we don't have problems after.
Right.
But when you said, you know, you're gonna put out a bid, did you say? I mean, you don't know who the contractor is that you hired to do the work?
Yeah, I don't know.
But they have to be bonded by the city, and they have to be somebody that the city agrees with, correct?
Yes.
You know, you know...
That's not on our side of things. We're just, we're just designers.
Okay, so you don't know. If you don't know, it's okay to say you don't know.
Yeah, we're just on the...
That's fine.
The design spectrum.
That's fine. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Anything further from the council? Thank you.
Second.
Oh, do we have it? Thank you. Are there any other proponents wishing to speak? Any opponents wishing to speak?
No.
Seeing none, do we have a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close made by Counsel Raposo?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Washington. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Item three?
Motion to open.
Motion to open the hearing made by Counsel Raposo?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item three, Mass Electric Company for an underground conduit location as follows: on Pleasant Street, National Grid is petitioning to install underground conduit beginning at a point approximately 20 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Eighth Street, and continuing approximately 40 feet in a southeast direction, installing five new four-inch conduits from newly installed switchgear manhole at 300 Pleasant Street to an existing manhole at 11 Pleasant Street, conduit being installed to improve reliability to the Durfee Union Mill Complex, in accordance with Plan Number 30581560.
Al Galvin, Design Engineer, National Grid. This one, there was a lot of complaints made recently due to outages over a long span of time from the Union Mill Complex. So we're installing a switchgear in this case. We got an easement from the property owner to, to put it in that location, and to alleviate those concerns and balance out the loads, sort out those fluctuations, those outage concerns. So that's basically the need for this equipment in this case. And I believe it was Prima Care is nearby, so that was, that was one of the concerns that the customer had. So looking to get that taken care of, so those outages are alleviated.
Thank you. Anything from the council? Thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Any opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none?
Motion to close.
Motion to close the hearing made by Counsel Raposo? Seconded by Counsel Pereira. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Item four is a storage license?
Motion to open.
Motion to open made by Counsel Raposo?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Romano Real Estate Trust, care of Max Harrison, Romano Trustee, 1010 Memorial Drive, 5F Cambridge, Mass, for permission to store 34,000 gallons of gasoline and 6,000 gallons of diesel fuel, for a total of 40,000 gallons underground at 323 William S. Canning Boulevard, on Lot C-06-0033 on the assessors' plan. We have a proponent?
Yes.
If you'd give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jim Bernardino, CMG Engineering, with offices in Sturbridge, Massachusetts. Here tonight, representing the applicant for a fuel storage license. There's proposed redevelopment for the property located at 323 William S. Canning Boulevard. The proposal is to raise and rebuild the existing site. Presently, there's a vacant building there. It'll be raised and redeveloped as a convenience store and a fueling station. The convenience store will be just over 5,800 square feet. There'll be six fueling positions associated with that, under a cover with a canopy above it to cover it. We're here tonight for a fuel storage license. There are two proposed underground tanks associated with the development. Both tanks are 20,000 gallons. They are split compartment tanks. One tank is 14,000 gallons regular gas, 6,000 premium. The other tank is 14,000 gallons regular again, with the second compartment with the 6,000 gallon diesel component. Obviously, this is for the fuel storage license only. There's a very detailed review process that still has to go forward with the fire department and state fire marshal's office as well. So this is just the first step as we move forward. So with that, turn it over to the council for any comments or feedback.
Anything from the council? Counselor in Seat Five, Counsel Pelletier.
That corner, 40,000 gallons?
Yes.
Now, what, what concerns? You need the license for the fuel first, and then you go for the building, and how does that work?
Basically, from the gas station component, there's a multi-stage process. First, obviously, there's land permitting that has to happen. That's not really contingent upon your license here, so the civil engineer, the civil site engineer is working with the other departments in the city for their land use permits. As far as the, the fuel station goes, first step would be to work with you, obtain a fuel storage license. After that, a comprehensive set of underground storage tank plans will be prepared. They've been prepared already. But they'll have all of the modern-day specifications that meet the current codes for, you know, double-wall tanks, monitoring systems, leak detections, overflow protections, things of that nature. And once those plans are prepared, they're given to the fire department for review, and they ultimately issue what they do, a permit to install, as part of the building permit process as well. There's also another process that goes, they take your fuel storage license that ultimately, if you look favorable upon it, we get, take that, we develop a fire suppression plan as well. Your licensed fire suppression plans gets reviewed by the fire department, goes to the state fires marshal's office for review and approval. They stamp several copies, they distribute it to themselves, to the fire department, to the contractors, to the engineers.
You have to go in front of the planning board or zoning board?
I believe there, they will, whether it's administrative or not, I'm not fully entailed. I'm not dealing with the overall site development, meaning the use, the permits, and the like. I'm strictly dealing with the fuel storage license and that component of the...
That's the first step, getting the license.
Yeah, the first step is getting the license.
All right, could you tell us what company it is, or is that a secret?
Uh, no. This is Neon, it's gonna be a Neon marketplace. It's a Poken Chaney, I'm killing the last name, but it's a real estate company that has multiple holdings, and they are in the process of developing several gas stations in New England.
Is there one around here?
They just built one in Seekonk. There's one in construction in Freetown, the town over, right on the line, actually, right next to the Amazon place. So that is gonna be very similar as far as the offerings go. The, the one that's being built next to the Amazon has a different component, which has some high-speed diesel, but very similar as far as the offerings for the convenience store.
All right, thank you for the information. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor in Seat Six, Counsel Pereira.
I know that you said you're just dealing with the storage.
Right.
But I believe they've already been to planning. And this Neon company is a little bit different than some of the other gas station convenience store. They're also looking for a liquor license, which I believe has been approved and is in, in Boston, waiting for something, so that they'd be able to sell, I don't know if it's beer, wine, or other types of liquor. They have outdoor dining at the one in Seekonk, so there are different things that they're doing, and it's already been before planning. I'll be honest with you, when I read the agenda, and I saw all these gas tanks, there's a couple of gas stations on that road, so all of a sudden, we get another one. I mean, you got Suprema around the corner, you got the Shell, you got the Seasons, and then there's one up the road in Tibbetts, and a lot of gas stations there.
Stuff changes, too.
And I thought, did this go to planning? And it did, and they're moving forward with it. But the convenience store you have is a bit different than some of the other convenience stores, that you can dine in.
Yes.
That it becomes like a little restaurant.
Yeah.
And I did drive up to Seekonk, actually because I wanted to buy a pair of shoes, but I stopped to say, to be honest.
Yeah, they, they definitely have different offerings, more upscale offerings, sandwiches and the like, and they do provide interior services, you know, for seating and things of that nature.
Right.
So it, it's a little bit more than just your, grab your lottery ticket and your smokes and get the heck out. So they, they do have a lot more offerings.
Yeah, because at first, I'll be honest with you, I wasn't thrilled about this, because it was just a lot of gas and just other gas stations there. I said to one of my colleagues, they're concerned about putting marijuana facilities all over the place, but at least they bring us money, you know, and we're gonna knock, I don't wanna knock somebody else out of business. That was a concern that I had, but I guess the offering is different, and maybe other people will kick it up a notch and have other services. But thank you for your explanation of what your specific job is, and thank you for coming down. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor in Seat Three, Counsel Vice President Dion?
Yeah, I just have one question, through the chair to the, the city clerk. Could this be approved contingent upon all other items and necessary licenses be approved?
Other licenses being...
Like the planning board, all the processes they need to go through?
Sorry, it's automatic anyway.
Yeah, all right.
The other, you don't grant the other licenses?
No.
Those are issued, but you can table this, and... If they don't get it... I suppose you can table it, but the other licenses are granted by the other boards.
No, I wouldn't be looking to table it. I was just, if everything else went through, then this would, the tanks would automatically be approved, kinda thing. All right, with that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Counselor in Seat Six?
I'll just add, this has to go through site plan review, and this council has reorganized and, you know, did some changes on site plan review. So, I mean, I wouldn't, I don't wanna stop a business from coming into the city. I mean, you're welcome.
If I just may add that this license doesn't guarantee that the tanks are gonna go underground. This license just guarantees that we move forward, that if we do obtain the appropriate site plan review approvals and the like, obviously, if we can't build our building through site plan review in our parking area, we're not gonna install a half a million dollars' worth of tanks. So obviously, this is just one of the, one of the building blocks for the overall project.
What I was surprised with was knocking down that building, 'cause this location on Canning Boulevard is the location of the grocery, the grocery outlet, grocers' outlet, and I thought that building was, you know, in pretty decent shape, but probably not the layout that you'd want.
In this type of businesses' locations, I've seen buildings eight years old, that size, getting torn down to put up a gas station.
See what happens when you have a lot of money? You can do that, yeah.
Exactly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I yield. Anything further from the council? Thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, any opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none?
Motion to close.
Motion to close the hearing made by Counsel Raposo, seconded by Counsel Kilby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Motion adjourned, public hearing.
Motion adjourned, public hearings made by Counsel Raposo, seconded by Counsel Vice President Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Public hearing is closed. City Council Committee on Finance will now come to order. Madam Clerk? Counselors Kadim?
Here.
Kamara?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Raposo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
And President La Libbidi-Labo? Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Before we get to citizens' input, we do have a citation. Counsel Vice President?
On July 20th, EMT Luke Farrell was traveling west on I-95. He observed a motorcyclist laying in the highway who had been injured in an accident. He pulled over, he instituted emergency medical help. It was later determined by the director of Trauma, the Trauma Center in Rhode Island that his actions were life-saving, and I think the city of Fall River should be very proud that we have people that are in our employ that work for our fire department and the EMS unit, who have moral and ethical standards like this gentleman does. He didn't have to stop that day. So often, you hear, "Oh, well, what the heck, they were doing their job." No, this gentleman went above and beyond his duties and performed life-saving measures. So I would like to present this citation to him. City of Fall River, City Council, official resolution, be it resolved that the City Council hereby extends its commendation to EMT Luke Farrell, Fall River Fire Department, Emergency Medical Services Division, in recognition of your heroic life-saving actions while off duty assisting the victim of a motorcycle accident on July 20th, 2022, on Interstate 195 westbound. Be it further resolved that the Fall River City Council extends best wishes for continued success, and that this resolution be entered into the records of the City Council adopted August 16, 2022. Thank you very much.
When I call your name, please come down to the table, and you'll have three minutes to speak. The first one is Michael Bryant, 35 Norman Street, Fall River, and the subject is youth proposal.
I am co-owner of Loves Boxing, located 126 Shove Street in Fall River, Mass. I'm here to advocate for the youth initiative proposed by Councilwoman Laura Washington. Also here is co-owner, John Burt, along with many students of mine that have participated over the course of, since October anyway, since we opened our doors. If you would just bear with me, I want to just put forth some data that we've collected, just to shed light on the importance of a boxing gym, more specifically, youth boxing within the city of Fall River. And I'll do my best to wrap this up in three minutes, so just bear with me for a minute. So from October 21, since we opened our doors, we serviced boxing classes and provided support, 'cause that's what I think that we do. Not only do we provide boxing classes, but we provide support to our city youth. So 48 youth, within less than a year, we provided boxing classes to. Out of that 48, six disclosed that they were heavily being bullied within our Fall River school systems, and that's just what they self-disclosed. 12 identified having anxiety and depression issues, and some of them disclosed much more severe issues that I can't even disclose within the council chambers, and that's problematic. So the outcomes of this, so out of those 48, this is what boxing does, confidence building. Being in a diverse atmosphere, we found that it lowers anxiety while activities like punching heavy bags, driving out aggression and stress while making athletes feel accomplished. Health and proper fitness, most children who train in boxing tend to have lower healthier body mass than other kids, and, and we know obesity unfortunately is widespread among youths, right? Video games, on the phones all the time, staying home, not in our gym. Better grades, and hopefully you'll hear from some of the parents and hopefully our students, homework is encouraged... Homework is encouraged before each training. I'm not saying they do it, right? But it's encouraged, right? In addition to instilling self-discipline within our gym, Boxing for Kids encourages responsibility and dedication in all their pursuits.
20 seconds.
Wow. Staying out of trouble, right? We know that if they're in our gym and they're doing good things, they're not out on our streets. That's a fact. Developing social skills, self-discipline, honor and respect, developing that team. Boxing is a lonely sport, right? But they're not doing it alone. They have team.
That is three minutes, Mr. Bryant.
Positive support anyways. I appreciate your time. I appreciate your listening. Thanks for letting me share.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person to speak. The next person to speak is Nelson Vasquez, 210 Sunset Hill, Fall River, and the subject is market rate housing. When you're ready, three minutes.
Hello, City Council. My name is Nelson Vasquez, 210 Sunset Hill, Fall River. So like everyone else, I watched a planning board meeting back on August 10th, and, you know, a planning board member asked very specifically that how is this market rate housing is going to service Section 8 voucher mobile recipients who can go anywhere with them? And Mr. Fio's answer was that given the rents that they're gonna produce, it's not even gonna help them. And that was on camera, which is very astonishing. So, you know, it's bad enough that we have a mayor and Mr. Fio who doesn't want to stop this market rate housing. So you know what? You see this right here? It says eviction notice. Okay, rent across the United States has surpassed $2,000. The median income for our area is $43,000. Per capita is $26,000, okay? We have people who are in desperate need, who need a place to live that's affordable. You know, so as you can imagine, you know, we could see a lot of our city residents out on the street with eviction notices because they can't pay their rent, and that's a problem. And not only that, you know, it affects our seniors too, because right here, they will also be out on the street, and that's not fair to them. You know, Mari Healy was down here, or actually is, came down here today, and she said that Massachusetts has an affordability problem, and she's right. And in the state of Massachusetts, 38% of them are seniors who are low-income, as well as working-class families and the disabled. Okay, those are the numbers, and it just seems that everything goes off the wayside. You know, the man with the money, who has the money, ARPA money, home funds, he doesn't even want to do a damn thing. He doesn't want, he doesn't want to lift a finger, and yet New Bedford did something about it, they're building affordable housing. He doesn't even want to lift a finger, and that's a problem, and the people are gonna hold him accountable. So in the end, you know, the buck stops with him, and the two people, this is who the people of Fall River are gonna hold accountable, Mr. Fio and Paul Coogan. There's no excuses for him. He has money, $50 million of ARPA money, and you mean to tell me that you can't spend at least $11 million just like how New Bedford did to supplement the funding gaps, to get those projects up and running?
20 seconds.
Sooner or later, we're gonna have to do it, and I understand this may fall off the wayside, but sooner or later, those H-DIP tax credits have to come before you. And I urge you to vote them down because that's in the best interest of the people, and you have an obligation to always vote in the best interest of the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Folks, we have 17 people signed up, so we're gonna kind of go through this quickly if we could stop the in-between. The next person to sign up is David Simons, 139 Langley Street, Fall River, Mass, and the subject is youth proposal. You have three minutes.
Hello, Council members, David Simons. This is my son, Connor Simons. Connor's six years old. He's a member of Loves Boxing Gym.
You each get three minutes, by the way.
Oh, that's great. He's not gonna use his, though. Connor struggled at his young age with some severe anxiety. He had a problem eating at one point, went on a food strike, failing to thrive, had surgery, ruled out medical. It was due to his anxiety and stuff. The beginning of September, school year, going to school with all this was very tough for Connor. He was struggling really bad. We enrolled Connor at a at Loves Boxing. And I've seen my son thrive. I've seen him fight cops and himself. I've seen him learn to love himself. I've seen him learn to build relationships with other kids. You know, it means the world to me. He's not on a screen all the time like he used to want to be. He doesn't have that fear of doing things and coming like he's shy here, but he would have never been here before. His time at Loves Gym built that. We're a family of five also, so part two to support this is we're able to pay our bills, but like many families, with the cost of living continually increasing, I'm like a car payment or a healthcare bill away from deciding whether I have to pay for a membership for my kids to participate in something like this or not. So we're here, and I'm sure there's many other families like us that feel the same way, and I really appreciate if this bill would be passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The next person, the next person signed up to speak is Brenda Bryant, 201 Lewis Street, Fall River, subject youth proposal, Loves Boxing. You have three minutes when you're ready.
Hello, my name is Brenda Bryant. This is my nephew. I'm his legal guardian. Landon has significant social, emotional issues. He was struggling in school, he was struggling at home. Since he's banned boxing, this is his best school year yet, not one discipline at school this year. He had a kid at the end of the year that hit him, and he didn't hit him back. That would have never happened prior, never. I would, the phone call I got, I was expecting the vice principal at Talbot to tell me that he was being suspended. He said he didn't even lay a hand on him. It would have never happened. Never. He's come such a long way. Come such a very long way. And he's 12, so he's 12. Do I have to say anymore? 12-year-old.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go.
The next person signed up to speak is Christine Simas, 47 Palmer Street, and the subject is youth proposal.
Hi there, I'm Christine Simas. This is my son Nicholas Simas. He is a member of Loves Boxing since they opened in October. I'm getting emotional, too. My son was one of the, one of the children that actually had a bullying problem and cuss. We put him in Loves. As you know, the pandemic was really hard on the kids. They were very isolated, again, screen time. After we came out of the pandemic, Nicholas had a very hard time transitioning out of the pandemic era to get back, socializing, back into school. It was, I'm sure he's not the only kid, but there was a lot of, a lot of trouble getting back into that. First year, starting back off from the pandemic into middle school was really rough. suffers with, you know, severe ADHD, and Loves has been a game changer for him. Respect, focus, exercise, health. It's such a community over there, and I'm very fortunate that, you know, I have a job that I can pay the membership. A lot of kids, people don't have that. This initiative really, really would be a game changer. There's not a lot of things for the kids anymore in the city. You know, I'm old, I remember P.I.L. dances and, you know, Big Top, and even, like, Laser Gate is gone, you know? There's no place for the kids anymore. When I was younger, we used to hang out on the street. This, he's 12, there's no way that I'm letting him, you know, roam the streets like we used to do. It was safer. There has to be a place for the kids, a safe place that teaches them valuable skills. He knows, he's learning skills that he doesn't even have a concept that he's learning there. And, you know, as a parent, you know, I have to support that, and I just hope if this initiative goes through, that other parents would get the chance to do that for their children as well. And, you know, drop in, anybody, you know, there's a schedule. You can drop in and see the kids four nights a week, the kids box, and it's not about punching each other. These kids have not thrown one punch at each other. It's learning drills and, you know, again, social skills. Welcome, drop in, drop in and see what the kids are doing. It's really, really amazing, and I support the initiative.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Simas, excuse me, Ms. Simas, what is the address of Loves Boxing?
Is it 310?
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Rena Brown, 105 Bank Street, and the subject is youth.
Hi, everybody, I'm Rena Brown. I'm a business owner, a resident, a taxpayer here in Fall River, and I'm here in support of Councilor Washington's proposal to dedicate $2 million of the ARPA money to the youth initiative. And I want to just briefly remind everybody and maybe educate some people, ARPA money stands for American Rescue Plan Act. And I think that the, I read the proposal, and I read the purposes and the reasons why Councilwoman Washington proposed this. We all too often forget that our youths are Americans and that this money that the federal government gave the states is for all Americans, old, young, middle-aged, it doesn't matter. And I think that one of the hardest hit but most under, like, heard, Americans are our youths, and it's great to see a lot of young people in the audience today see the city of Fall River's government at work. I don't think they get the opportunity to see this, and I'm glad that they're here to voice that, their opinions. But when, you know, the government gave this money, they said to the cities and towns, you know, you can't use it as you may, it has to be used for small businesses, households, hard-hit industries, economic recovery. I did some research, and some of the, the numbers right now, as of July of 2022, they've done studies because cities and towns have to report how they're using it, and the breakdown so far of the billions of dollars that the government has spent in this ARPA money, 14% of that money so far has gone into public health, 12% infrastructure, 9% economic development and workforce, 8% community aid, 6% public safety. I think Councilor Washington's proposal fits squarely within like three of those uses. You know, I have a young child too with some neurological development issues, and you know, the first thing the experts said to me was, sign him up for some kind of activity, an organized activity. It happened to be karate. I read Councilor Washington's proposal, and, you know, it isn't just boxing and karate, it's also arts and music and a number of other activities that our youths did not get to engage in during COVID. And this money is for the recovery process of what happened to our kids during COVID, when they couldn't socialize with each other at school. They couldn't go to playgrounds, they couldn't go to karate, they couldn't go to boxing, they couldn't go do their one-on-one in-person or even group music lessons, they couldn't even go to the local basketball courts and play basketball.
20 seconds.
There's a number of youth leaders here today that organize so many events, and, you know, and we don't do enough to show that the city of Fall River supports all their efforts. There's a lot of unsung heroes here in Fall River that do many things that engage our youth. You know, I'm a criminal defense attorney, and I'm not saying that to advertise. What I'm saying is, most of the time, the clients that end up in my office were youths and juveniles that didn't get the benefit of a city supporting them by throwing money at activities they could engage in.
That's three minutes, Ms. Brown.
Is that three minutes?
It is.
Thank you so much. I hope you vote in favor of Council Washington's proposal.
Thank you. The next person, the next person signed up to speak is Bethany Franco, 488 Bank Street, and the subject is youth proposal.
Good evening.
Hi.
Bethany Franco, resident of Fall River. We live on Bank Street. This is Tommy. We call him Tommy Guns over at Loves Boxing. And this is Elise. So we're here to speak about the proposal for the youth. So I've watched Tommy grow since he's been a member of Loves. It's, it's the, everything you've heard, the discipline, the determination. I've seen a creative side and a problem-solving side in his one-on-one sessions and working with his friends over at the gym that I see trickle down into the home life as well, and I know it's helping him over at school. When you ask him why he likes the gym, he shows you his muscles, but I see much more than that. It's, it's the dedication that he's, that is being instilled in him, and just a great place to be, and I definitely second the mom who said, come on down and check it out. It's a great place to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Roxanne Longstone, 22 Harriet Street, and the subject is skating rink.
Roxanne Longstone, 22 Harriet Street.
Justin Rukowski, 9 Michael Street.
Counselors, oh God, my voice is gonna sound terrible, so please excuse me. Thank you for your time and attention. I am here tonight to advocate for the matters before you regarding the installation of the portable ice skating rink in Kennedy Park. Before the city spends millions of dollars rebuilding the permanent rink, it seems wise to invest a fraction of the amount of the temporary rink, which would provide city residents and surrounding towns for immediate skating through the winter months. This opportunity would give the city an idea of the level of interest in outdoor skating as well as a baseline estimate of what the city might expect in terms of revenue. As you are aware, we are planning a Winter Wonderland event in Kennedy Park where the park will be lit up and, will be lit up and create a holiday atmosphere for all of the community to enjoy. The skating rink would serve as the main event of our city celebrating the holiday season. This Wonderland event with an outdoor rink would be drawing in crowds, and that would bring in potential revenue to our city. I think this seasonal rink is a wise investment of our county ARPA dollars and is certainly a family-friendly attraction that all can enjoy. I urge you to vote to approve the funding for this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here for support only, definitely a huge, huge youth advocate for Fall River. So Mrs. Washington, thank you for putting that bill forward.
Me as well. I'm in support of that.
So. Thank you.
One second. Councilor in seat three, excuse me, Councilor in seat three, Council Vice President?
Yeah, just, I know we don't normally interact, but a couple of questions. So temporary, how long, how long can we actually use it? Is it something that the city is gonna own, and then each year it can be put out? What are the logistics behind it so that people have a better idea? Because I know there are people in the community that support it as well.
Oh, yes. So right now, it's this, right now, this, if we were to do it for this year, it'd just be a rental, excuse, a rental rink. So it would be in use as of this year from November 23rd to February 23rd, possibly to March, but we would, it would just be something that we'd be trying out as far as revenue, what kind of revenue it would bring in.
Now, this rink is, you can always skate on it.
Yes.
That's the benefit of it.
It's a regular rink. It's, it's an ice skating rink as is Driscoll Rink, a little bit smaller than Driscoll Rink. Average hockey, I think, is 17,000 square feet. I think this one is 13,000 square feet that we would be putting in. But the company, it's an ice op company that comes in, they manufacture, they deliver, they set up, everything is included all in one price. They train us, they have zambonis, they supply us with ice skates, everything that you could, you know, need for the ice skating rink itself.
So if there's a necessity for maintenance, they would take care of that as well?
Well, they'll train us how to maintain it. So basically, from my understanding, from speaking with him, basically, it's just flooding it, flooding it, and then we have sweepers that we would have to sweep the ice skating rink with, but that's about the maintenance. And if in the weather, if it snows, we would have to, they'll train us how to clean it off, and then the zamboni to run it.
Okay. Thank you. Then I yield.
Thank you. Councilor in seat two, Council Kibera.
Just one real quick question. Is it similar to the one at Patriot Place? Have you ever seen the one at Patriot Place?
Yes. Yes, it would, it would basic mimic the one from the, with the classic at Fenway Park.
Would they have skates available to people that don't have skates as well? Do they rent them out?
Yep.
Okay. That I yield, thank you.
Thank you. This is item 26 on our agenda. Councilor has it in as a resolution and she does have all the information as well. Anything further from the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person signed up to speak is Barrett Enselmo. The address is 921 Rock Street, and the subject is youth proposal.
How's it going, guys? I'm here on behalf of the youth proposal. This is my son, Riker. He's four years old. He's been boxing for about five months now. And it happened out of the blue. You know, he came up to me one day and said, Dad, I want to box. I was like, so what do you know about it? And he said, I, I learned it from YouTube. So two things there, he learned in YouTube and I didn't want him on YouTube anymore. So I signed him up in a gym in Swansea. I saw Riker thrown to the side by the coaches in that gym. And he came up to me one day and said, I want to quit. And I said, why do you want to quit? He goes, I don't know, Dad, I just don't want to do it anymore. Comes to find out, the kid knew all along, he was just totally forgotten about by his coaches. And one day, I was on Instagram, I saw Love's Boxing, and I saw all the youth that they were training. And I said, my kid didn't never got that, never got that way he was in Swansea. So we made a change. I said, you want to try it one more time? And he said, yes. And we walked into Love's Gym. Mike O'Brien greeted us, didn't say anything besides, how was your day? That was the first thing he ever said to my son was, how was your day? And that's anyone that walks through that door, all those kids, the first thing that comes out of Mike's mouth is, how was your day? The city needs positive role models. I've had one, Don Srinath. He saved me. Like, I was going down the wrong path. Donald Srinath was a big leader in my life. I want that guy Mike to be the leader in my son's life. But like everyone else, I'm refrigerator away from losing everything. Paycheck to paycheck. This would do a huge, huge, it would be life-changing for us, so I don't want to lose it. What's your favorite thing about boxing?
Both the punching bags.
But I also want to add, the exercises these kids get at that gym is next to none. My kid's doing burpees. When I'm cooking dinner, I'm going in the living room and he's doing burpees and push-ups and, and sit-ups all by himself, not even being asked or told. And that's just from all the leadership there. Not yet. But I will tell you, he's getting good training.
Thank you.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Next person signed up to speak is Mike Fernandez, 221 Weaver Street, and the subject is youth proposal.
Hi, my name is Mike Fernandez. I am the owner of Infinite Fitness and Sports Performance. I'm also a former educator in the Fall River School District. I taught for 10 years between Cuss and Doran. Many people know Infinite Fitness as a facility that helps athletes to go on and get college scholarships, play professionally, and even help people lose weight. But it's really a lot, about a lot more than that. In fact, one of our mottos is building champions in life and in sport. And over the years, while we've helped many athletes go on to be successful in sports, we've helped a lot of athletes go on to be successful human beings. I'm talking about better brothers, sisters, moms, dads, you know, teammates, sons, daughters. It's about the impact that you make on someone, right? I've dedicated my entire adult life to changing the lives of others. And I just learned about this proposal yesterday. And I'm sure there were a lot of emails that were probably sent over to, to council today from different athletes we have across the country and adults that are now living their life across the country. And a mentor of mine said to me a long time ago, Mike, live a life worth telling a story about. What's your story going to be? And I think, you know, we've done so much over the years. And when I saw this proposal, it was what we've already been trying to do. So when you look at a lot of our success stories, we see a lot of people on the outskirts of Fall River that are getting all these opportunities. And we had been in a position prior to COVID where we could take some of these inner-city kids and we gave them what we called the scholarship, where we basically let them train for free and told them that it was sponsored by a local business so that they wouldn't go out and tell their friends they were training for free or training at such a low rate because we couldn't do it for everyone. And you're going to hear a story of another gentleman, one person from the city that we've able to do that for. And I know that with this proposal, us along with a lot of other small businesses in this community are going to be able to change the lives of hundreds, if not thousands, of our youth, who will then go on to change the lives of hundreds, if not thousands, more. And that's where change happens. So what I want to say to, to the council is that, like my mentor said to me, live a life worth telling a story about. You have the opportunity right now to be able to put forth a program that is going to change thousands of lives. And your legacy here in this community, in this town, can start today in changing the lives of those around you and especially our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Jason Hall, 255 Whipple Street. The subject is youth proposal.
My name is Jason Hall Jr., and I'm here on behalf of the youth proposal. And I'm here to tell my story about how Infinite Fitness impacted my life. The first time I got introduced to Infinite Fitness was when I was playing for Fall River Falcons. And Infinite Fitness showed me that you can do anything you want and you can look forward to all, as long as you have goals. And that's a big thing that they influenced me to be a great person and not just a great athlete, but a great person. And I just want to tell you guys that you can do anything if you just put, you have goals and you look forward to it. But I also recently, so when I was younger, and Infinite Fitness introduced me, I had got away for, for a little while because it's really expensive to be at a high-level gym like that. And I had got reintroduced to Infinite Fitness my junior year. I was doing a, they were doing a thing at Durfee. And I had showed up every single day and I put in the work and they wanted to give me an opportunity. So like he said, he said they were going to give me a scholarship to just go there for free and just put in the work so, because they didn't want my, my talent to go to waste. So, so I have been going there for the last two years and they have helped me put on at least 30 pounds of muscle and just made me a faster athlete and just helped me be a better person in general. And opened up a lot of opportunities that have helped me find, to be able to get into a prep school. They helped me get on news several times. So it's, it's a blessing and I thank God every day for it. And I just wanted you guys to vote on behalf of youth proposal.
Thank you. Council Kilby?
What school are you going to, Justin? What school?
What school? I, I now enrolled in Southfield Academy in Connecticut, but I was enrolled in Durfee High School.
Good for you.
Oh, and I have a full ride to Villanova.
I know your mother, Susan.
My mom, Leanne Manning.
Susan Langelayer? She's, well, whatever. But just, I want to say congratulations to you. I mean, there were a lot of people who liked Durfee football and Durfee sports who were very disappointed that you left. But, I mean, it was your career path, right?
Yeah.
A lot of the opposing teams were happy. I knew a couple of coaches, oh gosh, God, he's, he's leaving? Oh, good. But you were phenomenal. I saw you play and just keep working hard, my friend. And it's, I've never met you in person, but very impressive, impressed with you and good luck at Villanova.
Thank you.
And I know how hard you worked, so, right there. Thank you.
I do know Susan, yes.
I know how hard you work, trust me. I pay attention to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Thomas Texara, 37 Dudley Street, and the subject is youth proposal.
How you doing? I'm Tom Texara, co-owner of Regiment Training Center in Fall River. We're at 147 Plymouth Avenue. We have mostly people that are just from the city, police officers, lawyers, things like that, that train with us. We also have athletes that compete on ESPN, athletes that have been on pay-per-view. And it's a very good thing for youth to be able to have an opportunity to train on the side of people that have made it that far in life. I think echoing these guys, the more options that these kids have to actually do something positive, the better, as far as going to Infinite Fitness, Love's Boxing, to my gym. It's very important for the kids to be able to do something other than just hanging out in the neighborhoods after school, going to a gym and doing something physical is very important. Thank you.
Next person signed up to speak, Barbara, is it Cunningham? 595 Harvard Street, and the subject is boxing gym.
Hi, I'm Barbara Higian. I live in 595 Harvard Street. I'm a registered nurse and I work in the Fall River community. I'm a homeowner, homeowner in this great city as well. And I'm the wife of John Burt, who's one of the owners of Love's Boxing. I believe in what boxing can do for kids in Fall River, physically, socially, emotionally, intellectually, and spiritually even. Boxing motivates you to be better. It teaches you how to develop good habits. Through discipline, you make improvements, you learn about consequences, and you acknowledge your success, make adjustments where your weaknesses lie. Boxing decreases anxiety. I know this too firsthand, as once you step into the ring a few times, you'll realize there aren't many other situations where you're more acutely afraid. Boxing helps you focus under pressure and adapt to change. Kids everywhere, some going down the wrong path, some being bullied, emotionally neglected and/or abused, boxing creates an outlet for them. They see a glimmer of hope. They get an opportunity to lead, choose which road their life goes down. Their perspective broadens and they grow socially, emotionally, physically, intellectually, and spiritually. A boxing environment becomes a place where some of your biggest supporters, role models, teammates, friends grow alongside you as you blossom into the person you never dared to be. I believe in these men. I believe in this mission. I believe it's what Fall River, our kids and our community need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Colin Dias, 560 Ray Street, and the subject is ARPA.
Thank you, Council President and members of the City Council. I came down today to speak about the great proposal for the winter ice skating rink at Kennedy Park. First of all, I think it would be a great investment in the community and I want to throw my full support behind it. And there's a few reasons for that. First of all, we have a great event being planned by the Winter Wonderland. And I'm excited to see what that will bring this winter in terms of tourism and just planning a great event for the community. And secondly, I think it'll be a great testing ground, as it was discussed, to bring in revenue. I mean, we could, again, it's not only ice skating can be used for many things. You can see it be used for ice hockey, you can see it used for figure skating. So not just sports related, it also is just community, just generally community-based. And I wanted to bring up one concern and, and I believe it was not discussed tonight, but I want to bring it up is this, I believe this proposal is time-sensitive. And I would hate to see that this specific item not come to fruition because of procedures. And I understand that the council oftentimes refers matters and is procedural, and I understand to finance to be discussed further. But I see, we have the city CFO here, we have the city administration, and I would like to see this conversation be taking place today so this project doesn't get halted in any way due to no fault of anyone. And I'm excited to see what would happen. And it was also great seeing, just off topic, but seeing the members of the community talk about their experience with anxiety, mental health issues. It was very touching and I hope to, and I want to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Jennifer Silva, 5296 North Main Street, and the subject is Love's Boxing.
Hi, my name is Jennifer. I'm a city resident my whole life, all 50 years of it. I'm here on behalf of Love's Boxing. I've been a part of Love since they opened the, before they opened the doors and the development. And when they were speaking to me about their mission, I've been, also been in the fitness industry over 25 years, so I was honored to be a part of this. But their mission was all about the kids and the youths and it was, it was, it was beautiful. I wanted to be a part of it since, since it was thought of. And then when they opened, when they actually opened up and you actually went in there and you see what they're doing, it was beyond what I envisioned and what they were explaining to me. They, when these kids walk through these doors, they, you know, they, they, they teach them, like they decompress, they learn, they grow. They're, they're having these positive relationships and healthy relationships. And this wonderful parents here, but some, you know, I've been in this city for a long time and there's lots of things have changed. And not every, not all these kids have the support and they need places like this. Like we have wonderful educators in our school systems, but those doors close. And where do they go at night? Where do they go on the weekends? So we need establishments like this to stay, to stay healthy and, and as much help as we can get to get as many kids off the street. You know, these, you know, they teach them to be individuals and, and self-control, things that, that they don't get, things that are going to carry them and they're going to, like, we, we say our kids are our future. We've said it a million times, but how many times do we actually think about what that means? Like, if you actually think about it, it, they are. And these men are given their heart. And so along with so many other wonderful people that are part of this, and I'm honored to be a part of it. But to, to see the city, like invest in their youth, they are our future and we need to help them and we need to get them on the right track. And they're doing beautiful things. And they said, when they first said Love's, I'm like, okay, boxing generates love, but I'm like, oh, now I get it. Because there is so much love in, in there. It's a big family. It's a wonderful place. And I'd love to see other kids get the opportunity to take part of it. So, and stop and, I'm there. But anyways, it's a wonderful place and I'm in support, I'm in support of the youth initiative. I think that's fabulous and, you know, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Carmine Prestapino and Nicole Prestapino, 52 Lyons Street, subject is Love's Boxing.
Hi, I'm glad that there were other people that cried before I got up here because I didn't want to be first. I'm Nicole Prestapino, this is my son Carmine. I want to try not to tell too much of his, his story to, you know, expose the details because it's his story. But Carmine certainly went through a difficult time and he started to resort to violence quite often. So he was getting in a lot of fights. We, I knew, I understood why he was fighting. I wasn't even angry with him, but I knew I needed to find him an outlet, a different way to handle that and express his feelings and handle different situations that he was dealing with. I signed him up. I actually did go to another local gym and that didn't work out, but we went over to Love's Boxing. And Mike and the whole, I don't even want to say team, the whole family was just welcoming from day one. And Mike and the whole, I don't even want to say team, the whole family was just welcoming from day one. I put just some notes in here, so let me just. Couple of things I've noticed with him. Carmine has always been a confident kid, but through some of his experiences, I did see him start to question himself in some ways. I saw his confidence boosted in many ways. I also saw him care more about himself and become more health-conscious and also more goal-driven. There were certain aspects of his life that I saw him, or certain people in his life, that I saw him separate himself from because he knew that might get in the way of his goals, and he was able to even express that openly with me and those people. He also went in there weighing 125 pounds. We look back at pictures, we laugh a little bit, because we didn't even, not that that's a heavy weight, but we didn't even realize how much weight he had lost while he was there. So now I think he's at, like, 112, and he certainly cares more about what he eats, what goes into his body, and what he does with himself every day. I think just in general, youth sports or youth activities are so important, and I feel really fortunate that we've made it to a place that we can afford this, but I'm aware that there are many people that can't, and we were once those people that couldn't. So I'm here to advocate for that, because I want other kids to have what Carmine has had. When we go to that gym, it's certainly become, like I said, a family from day one, but for all of us, like, my other kids, they don't go there, they're in other sports. But when they walk in, they're their family, and they feel that. My husband has started now boxing with Carmine, so that's also great that they're able to take classes together and have that bonding time together. Again, he's lucky, he's, you know, one of the youth who has both of his parents in his life, but I know that there are youth that don't, and I know that they could find that, that support and some amazing role models in there. That's one thing I say all the time when people ask where my kids go. I talk about the great group of people there and the perfect role models that they are, exactly who you want your kids around. But I know Carmine wanted to speak a little about what Love's, you know, has done for him and how it's made him feel.
All I can say is it just boosted, boosted my confidence, it just made me, like, more goal-driven and just made me a better athlete in person or in general. And then just now, I was fighting in school, and now I have something I gotta look forward to like this, so if I, like, fight in school again, something like, like, just more discipline in general, um, sorry.
You know that, you know that if you fight in school, I think what you're trying to say is that Mike and the gym wouldn't approve, and you don't want to disappoint them, right? That's what you're trying to say.
And just hopefully, when I'm 18, I turn pro and Mike's there with me.
Thank you. Thank you.
Last person signed up to speak is John Burt, 595 Harvard Street, and the subject is Love's Boxing.
Hey, guys. My name is John Burt, 595 Harvard Street. I'm Mike Bryant's partner at Love's Boxing. I'm going to take a lot less than three minutes. You've heard, you've heard everybody else speak. I want you to consider just one thing. You cannot be on your cell phone while you're wearing boxing gloves. So we give these kids, if nothing else, a couple hours where they can't be checking their phone to see who's picking on them. We, we, we help them in that way, and it's important. Screen time is kind of rough right now, and that's all I have to say. They've said everything else. All right, guys, thanks.
Thank you. Item two is discussion with Community Preservation Committee Representatives, the accomplishments in the 10th anniversary of the Community Preservation Act. If you would all please introduce yourself when you get settled.
Well, good evening, Council, and thank you. This is Madam President. My name's John Brant, Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee, 116 Rock Street.
My name's Alexander Silva. I am Clerk of the Community Preservation Committee, 263 Pine Street.
And I'm Sandy Dennis. I'm the Administrator for the Community Preservation Committee, 132 Highland Avenue in Fall River.
I just wanted to, we just wanted to come in front of you tonight, because I know during our annual meeting, you have your budget process, so it's a little difficult to be in every mix going on in the city. So on behalf of Fall River Community Preservation Committee, I'd like to thank everyone for their continued support of the Community Preservation Act, CPA, in helping to make our community a better place. The Community Preservation Act is a smart growth tool that helps communities around the state preserve open space, historic sites, create affordable housing, and develop outdoor recreational facilities. As Fall River celebrates its 10th year since adopting the Community Preservation Act, the CPC has funded close to 100 projects in the city. The hard work of the committee has made a real difference in improving Fall River's parks, restoring, preserving historic resources, protecting precious open space, and creating more affordable housing. Some of the highlights of 2021, we provided over $12 million in CPA funding over the last 10 years. And the breakdown of that is 64% of the Community Preservation Act funds have gone to the city projects. 38.5% is non-park projects, 25.5% is city parks, and then 28.2% was Community Preservation Act for nonprofits. And then the private side was 7.8%. During this past year, we've tried to reach out and promote CPA a little bit, more to the community. So we did a outreach education collaborating with the young adults from Fall River TV. We're going to show you shortly after this, two short videos, and in all, they're going to have 10 videos that we're going to do a premiere later on in the year. We collaborated with the Creative Arts Network, with students from Bristol Community College for a holiday happening tour. And CPA-funded properties, that went rather well. First year doing that, we're probably going to do that again this year. And we participated on a lot of online training seminars. So, and then to fill in the end, we do have our next funding round coming up. Eligible applications can be found on the city website. Just go to Community Preservation. The deadline for that is September 15th. September 1st, we meet on the 15th. If you go on there, it'll highlight everything you need, the eligibility application, what you need to do to fill it out, and then you've got to turn it into City Hall by the 1st. So we're going to show the two short films now.
Fall River is in the forefront of honoring members of the Armed Forces. The Community Preservation Act funded upgrades to the Veterans Memorial Bicentennial Park. In May 2021, Fall River dedicated the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall, an 80% scale replica of the original. The aluminum panels are engraved with the names of more than 58,000 heroes killed or missing in action during the Vietnam War. The project, including landscaping, exceeds recreation and open space requirements set by the Community Preservation Act. 10 years ago, Fall River voters approved a 1.5% surcharge on property tax bills to incentivize history, travel, and diversity. $310,000 was designated to build this powerful tribute, which has become a location for reflection and healing. The park is now fully handicap accessible and is open to all at no cost, dawn to dusk. CPA funds have supported thousands of significant projects in Massachusetts. Thank you for your continued interest in community beautification and betterment.
The Gothic Revival-style arch at Oak Grove Cemetery signals the final resting place of some of Fall River's most prominent residents.
Since 1873, thousands of funeral sessions have passed through these ornate iron gates.
War heroes, abolitionists, mill owners, and Lizzie Borden are buried within these walls.
Despite fine craftsmanship and historical recognition, the arch was unable to withstand time and the elements, and was in danger of collapse.
10 years ago, Fall River residents voted to adopt the Community Preservation Act, which allows for a 1.5% surcharge on property tax bills. This cherished landmark was saved with funds through the Community Preservation Act.
In just five months, this time using some modern machinery, local contractors refurbished the granite arch and replaced sections of the gate.
A uniquely Fall River work of art and a respectful reflection for the dead has been saved for future generations.
CPA funds have supported thousands of significant projects in Massachusetts. Thank you for your continued interest in community beautification and betterment.
Like I said, that's just.
The school administration building at 417 Rock Street was built over 100 years ago by craftsmen from around the globe.
A Mr. and Mrs. William Brayton Mill Owners raised their nine children in this eight-man home.
Decades later, the property became too costly for a single family and was gifted to the Fall River School District. Architects reconfigured the 22 rooms to accommodate administrative staff.
By 2018, this historic structure was compromised, eliciting mold and water damage. Once dubbed "The Last Big House on the Hill," this extraordinary piece of architecture was in poor condition.
Care was shown to restore artistic elements, including the circular railing and banister, chair rails, crown molding, antique and oak flooring, and the building is now handicap accessible.
Roofwork was the primary concern for the Brayton House. This new pitch surface directs water to a modernized drainage system.
10 years ago, Fall River residents voted to adopt the Community Preservation Act, which allows for a 1.5% surcharge on property tax bills to incentivize history, travel, diversity, and recreation. CPA funds have supported thousands of significant projects in Massachusetts. Thank you for your continued interest in community beautification and betterment.
That's three. We've got seven more coming up.
Fall River is in the forefront of honoring members.
But we're doing this to let the public know where their tax dollars are being spent. We just had an article come out in the Herald News, and the writer, Dan Medeas, was, just got off the Quikranch rail trail with his daughter, and he didn't know that got a start from CPA. We funded this study to get the study done, so that way the committee could go in front of the federal government and the state to get funding to do the rail trail. And splash pads, the summer, kids enjoying the hot weather, CPA money, helping cool off kids in the summer. So there's a lot of projects out there you might not think CPA did it, but it's helping. I think it improves neighborhoods and restore old historic buildings like the Lafayette House. We went in with the Durfee Tech Building, which was a disaster for years. And just with our little money of $300,000 going into it, helped develop that building, and I think it's a, it's going to be a great building for years to come. And basically, that's all I have to add.
Sure, Alex, go ahead.
And I just wanted to say that we think it's important that the City Council has the correct numbers in front of you. It's very important that the community knows the facts regarding how much money is kind of distributed and what projects receive it. There's already been one thankfully failed attempt to repeal the Community Preservation Act in Fall River, which would be a very, it would be a travesty essentially. And I think it was at a recent City Council meeting where someone said that a majority of the community preservation projects were private, when as you can see from the numbers before you, it's in fact only 8% of that is private projects. Or be, only 8% of the community preservation projects are private. Thanks.
Now, I'm just going to interject as well. I'm going to piggyback on what Alex said. What I did is I did the sheet so that it's broken down into public park projects, public projects, private, nonprofit, profit, and then for-profit, private projects. And even if you look at the column with the private projects, the structures that are on that list are, they're historical projects. They're pieces of artwork, the Abbey Grill, the Eagle Event Center. I mean, that building was designed to resemble a Fall River line ship. So although I know that public projects aren't appealing to people, they're a piece of Fall River's history, and if we don't help fund them, they're going to disappear from the city. It's very, very difficult for private projects to get funding. They're not allowed to apply for grants. Only nonprofits really are able to apply for grants. And then a lot of these private projects that go for tax credits, they go for bank loans, these institutions are looking for them to leverage their money. So one way they can leverage it is with CPC funds, because they can apply for this. And banks and other places look for that, and they look favorably on that. So when you look at the privates, it's, it's not a negative thing. It's saving a piece of Fall River's history. So, and, and also the ones that you'll see here, some, yes, they are community housing, but they are going to put money back into the economy. They're reputable business people in the city. They've done projects, I mean, well-respected projects in the city. So I don't think that you can look at any one of these and say that they're really bad. And then the other thing that we need to consider with CPC, and I think as a committee too, we have to start looking at, is really working together as a council with us and the city departments working with the CPC to leverage some of this money. You always get a park grant, so you should really strategize with the committee, sit with the committee, sit with the grant writer, and strategize how a park grant needs matching, so talk to CPC about that match for that park project that you're going to apply for this year. And, you know, bring this committee in on the conversation on what park projects you're going to apply for, and then someone can apply for that same project through CPC, and you can leverage that funding and you can match those grants. There's lots of historic projects too that you can do that with. So I think we need to all come together, as everyone else was saying here tonight, to come together as a community and let everyone have a seat at the table and strategize and start looking for different and better ways to start leveraging all of this money that we all have. So that's all I have to say, and I will say that I'm very happy and proud to be working with such a great committee, because they put a lot of thought and research and time into their projects.
Thank you. Counsel Kilby?
Yes, thank you. Well, I think this is very important, obviously, this presentation for the community to see where some of the tax dollars are going, so. I'm someone of a history buff, always have been, and that was a concern. Thanks for clarifying that in terms of the private-public issues. And thanks for clarifying that it's 8%, right?
Less than actually.
So I remember when this was on the ballot and they got approved, many people were surprised. I think it was like a 60-40 percentage. It was kind of overwhelming that people approved this, so. They're seeing the benefits of the historic significance of Fall River, and just keep up the great work. I'm very happy to, that we're doing this type of work in Fall River. Well, thank you. We have so many treasures here. I know I had a conversation with the mayor about the planning, planning. I was explaining to him how historic planner would help, because CPC cannot pay for an historic planner. But when a project is, goes out to be engineered, it costs about $20,000. So we're paying an outside firm to do the work, where we could do it in-house and save that. And you can look at, the city has 64% of CPC money, so that's well over $6 million. That would be, say, 50 projects, $20,000, it'd go back into the city projects. So if you do see that come up. So if you do see that come up where historic city planner, it would be, well, it would pay for itself, so keep that in mind.
Just one little point. On our agenda ironically is the discussion regarding the offer money for the buyer's here, the Discovery Center. And it was a motion made, I believe, Counsel Kadim and seconded by, I believe, Counsel Kamar.
Yes.
To vent it through your, you know, your committee first.
Yeah.
So I guess my question is, is that money available? Do you have that sum of money that maybe, I know it has to go through your committee and have to have discussion.
Yeah.
But what's, has there been discussion with your committee in terms of whether that, whether or not that's doable?
Is that the $1 million? Is that the $1,300,000?
Yes, 1.365.
Yeah, I mean...
Now, who's putting that in? Mike Bossier?
Bossier.
Yeah. We've talked about that, so yeah, that'll be probably coming before us this year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So it's under consideration?
Yeah. It'll be presented to us, so we'll open it for eligibility, and it'll probably go to the funding round, but we'll see what we can do.
So what's your total, Steph, I'm taking most time here. What's your total allocation of money from the tax?
For this year, eh, we hope to be what we did last year, 2.4.
So that'd take a big, big, big chunk out of it, obviously.
I think it would actually be the largest project too that Fall River's Community Preservation Committee has ever approved. And it would be good to know, just depending on similar towns have had experiences where they're trying to purchase pieces of land, and they're kind of operating under the buyer's timetable. So we operate under the timetable of the application process, so they have to submit eligibility applications. We review them September 15th. So depending on the timeline of whoever is selling the land, it might not be logical to wait until the full application process because as you all know, you approve the final project sometime in May, June, it's late. So that's something to consider. There's always emergency applications that we can look at, but it has to be an emergency, which is...
So that'll take like half of your tax allocation.
Well, like this year, we bonded two projects. The central fire station, which is going to look great when it's done.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the fire museum. So it came out to like 9.2. It'll be separated when they pay it out. But on our end, we don't like to bond in case something happens, say CPA goes away. We want to make sure what we have bonded out would be covered within the next two years from collecting CPA money. So we could look at bonding for that again, too.
Well, hopefully it's not going to go away, so.
Hopefully not. I think it's a great tool.
I know there were some discussions, we talked about it, you called my office, and that's not, I confidently, that's not going to happen, so. Thank you, Ayil.
Thank you. Counsel in seat three, Counsel Vice President Dion.
Yeah, I was going to bring up the same subject. In your book, you've given, you've given significant money to the Bio Reserve. That's one in the same, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So you've already dedicated $780,000 to this initiative.
Yeah. We've purchased 84 acres of open space down there, and that's considered a Bio Reserve, so yeah.
It's predominantly land purchases.
Right.
There's been talk and I think maybe some previous applications regarding a welcome center. I know it's been long sought after by a lot of groups in the city, but nothing of that has been approved towards the $700,000 that you're referring to.
But this year, we, they funded the Barnumis Farm as well. So that's historic preservation.
Yeah.
That wasn't open space this year, although we did fund two projects for the Water Department this year.
That's three buildings on 14 acres. They're going to have one building as a like educational office, and then two other buildings for workshops for people to go use.
So the maintenance that would be involved in what you've already awarded would help in this other initiative also, right?
Yes.
For the development of the bios, of the Discovery Center?
Yes.
It'll tie in. Yeah, it'll tie in.
We're not quite sure what all's in the new one coming because I've just been talking with Mike, so I haven't seen the application yet, so.
We'll know September 1st.
All right, thank you. With that, Ayil. Thank you, Counsel. Counsel T. Day, Counsel Washington.
First of all, I want to commend you on the work that you do. You're preserving Fall River's history, and I just, I'm thrilled to see the Fire Museum on there because I grew up going there. My mother worked there as a child, so me and my brother spent countless hours, so it's, I'm thrilled to see that on there. I was just at, with my youngest daughter at the Fall River Historical Society, and she was amazed. My kids have been going there every year, all of the places. So I just have a question. Does this group, are you looking at doing anything with the Underground Railroad? I know that's a question a lot of kids have. Has that come across your way? I know different projects, places in the city.
Well, we do the Dr. Fisk House, which is part of that. If Alex, you'd like to tell her about that?
I'm also on the Board of Directors of the Preservation Society of Fall River, which has received community preservation grant funding. Actually, it helped purchase the house before I even joined the board. The Dr. Isaac Fisk House on Pine Street, which is an underground railroad. A lot of the grants awarded by the committee so far have gone to exterior rehabilitation to increase the street, the street look and the value of the neighborhood by extension, in the hopes is to have an underground railroad museum open to the public in what was once Dr. Fisk's base and office.
Oh, that's amazing.
Still a bit away.
So is that a private or does, you guys own, I don't care where, who.
Nonprofit.
It's a nonprofit. So that's fantastic.
Yeah, and our grants generally come with deed restrictions of some kind, whether it's rehab, historic preservation, affordable housing, or protecting the land, you know, conservation land, conservation deed restrictions.
What a major attraction that would be for the City of Fall River. When are you looking at being able to have that as a museum? Is that five years down the road, a year down the road?
It's a couple of years down the road.
A couple of years down the road.
It's an all-volunteer organization, doing as much as we can in our spare time.
Well, thank you for that. And just speaking as a citizen of Fall River, I love our history and what you guys are doing, and I didn't even know that house existed, so I guess, you know, what you need from us to get your, what you're doing out there and these places to visit, you know...
Well, the videos are going to be doing that because one of the videos will be the Lafayette Durfee House. Another video, I believe, is going to be Pine Street. We're also going to be doing videos for the Bio Reserve because we've done so many projects there. So we have seven more videos that we're doing. So those projects will be incorporated, and then what we're going to plan on doing is having like a small red carpet event, like a small film festival, incorporating it in with our annual meeting. So hopefully you'll all come and you'll be able to see them.
I'm thrilled. And I just have one more question. Was your group responsible for keeping and preserving the Fabric of Fall River video?
No.
That was not your group. Great video of the history of Fall River, and that was preserved.
I think that was Fred TV, though. Probably not mistaken.
Great, great video of the history of Fall River. So I just love what you guys are doing. Thank you, Ayil.
And with all of our projects comes a deed restriction, so they can't knock the house down, change the historic value of it. They have to stay within the state interior design, so.
That's fantastic.
Does keep it looking historic and the city, you know, looking good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel in seat six, Counsel Pereira.
I just have a question. Some of the money comes from the Registry of Deeds with home purchases. So this year, with homes selling for so much more and more money coming in, is that what you meant when you said that you hoped that you would get more?
Well, right now, the state reps, the state rep, state senate voted for the $20 million surplus, but Governor Baker put that on hold. He did it last year, too, and we got the 20 million. That's what bumped us up to the 2.4. So he'll probably do that again this year, so we'll end up with a little extra money.
I was just hoping, I remember when, meeting with Al Lima at his kitchen table, wanting to put the, this item on the agenda.
Yeah.
To get CPA. All these other communities were getting that money from the registry. We weren't getting anything. I think that was a big push on why people felt, you know, positive about it and voted for it because we were losing all those years.
One of our strong supporters is Senator Mike Roderick, who's one of what the Ways and Means Committee. So he's been a big backer of CPA, so.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah.
That we get that money. And I think, Mrs. Dennis, I think the ideas of putting videos out there, you know, even the videos to put out during council meeting when there's a break or a school committee meeting, when they're in executive session, and instead of people watching a blank screen that says "In Exec," putting things like this, the public needs to see all the hard work and, you know, what you're doing. And I like the idea of trying to connect them all with the city, and perhaps that's with the treasurer of the city having, you know, quarterly meetings on what grants are being applied for and what matches you can do for grants because it'll stretch, it'll stretch our dollar a lot further. But again, thank you for the good work that you, the committee does.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Item three is a discussion proposal for Bristol County ARPA funding of $1,365,000 for the Bio Reserve Discovery Center.
Motion lifted.
Motion lifted from the table.
Second.
By Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Vice President Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted?
I'm sorry, was tabled in full council? I apologize. Sorry.
Yeah, it was.
Was it tabled in vote? Well, either way, it's lifted.
Tabled in full council.
Members of the administration?
Good evening. Before we start, we have with us Kara Hum, who is the new city OMA coordinator. Most of you have met her.
Congratulations, Kara.
Thanks. Good evening.
So Kara is an attorney, and I know that she's been speaking with a number of you about different aspects of proposals and how to get proposals from ideas to proposals. So I just wanted to introduce her. Thank you for having us tonight.
All right, thank you, Counsel. If you'd like, I can do a brief presentation on the project. I know this was tabled at the last meeting. There were some questions in relation to how this whole entire project was going to be funded, and I wasn't able to be at the last meeting, so I do apologize. But I think Kara did an excellent job laying out within your packet the different funding sources that we're going to be able to be, that we're trying to leverage on this project. So this is a piece of property that we've been looking at for a while. It's on the shores of the North Portup Pond off of Blossom Road, directly within the drinking watershed of the North Portup Pond. I believe the question in relation at the last meeting was whether CPC funds were going to be used for this project. We are proposing to use CPC funds. I already have the grant application. Me and Mike have gone back and forth on a couple of different versions, and we are planning to submit that prior to the September 1st deadline, so that will be submitted. In the past, we have had the support of the CPC on this project. That doesn't mean, you know, they have their process to go through for their funding round this year, and I'm sure they're going to have a lot of great projects to choose from. But last time, we did make it through the eligibility round and the funding round, but then we were not at a point with the property owners to be able to go through and purchase that property. How the breakdown works, we'd be asking for 1.365 from the Bristol County ARPA funds. We're proposing to ask CPC for $515,658, and we already have an application into the EOEEA, which is Executive Office of Environmental Affairs at the state level through their land grant program. So we've submitted the application. Actually, tomorrow, I have a property walk with their representative coming down to evaluate the property. The land grant will be able to, will be able to be used for a portion of the purchase for the land. In the back, you can't use that to purchase structures or anything like that. So a portion will, the portion from the land grant will be used to purchase part of the land that's in the back will be allocated towards that purchase. The ARPA funding and the CPC funding will be the match for the land grant and also be able to purchase the rest of the property. It's going to be one purchase, but it's going to be divided up so that the different restrictions are put on the different parcels. The balance of the funding from CPC will go towards historic preservation of the property. So this is a farmhouse from the 19th century, as well as some outstructures. So we'll be, we'll be working to historically, historically redo the property on the exterior, and then we'll be using the balance of the ARPA funds to renovate the interior into space that can be used as an educational center, public meeting area, as well as a welcome center area for a Bio Reserve. As most of the council knows, we have the 18,000-acre Bio Reserve, which is a portion of Fall River Water Department land, as well as the Free Town State Forest, trustees of reservations, and DCR are partners within the Bio Reserve. But there's really no area for people to be able to go and get information, no spot that can be staffed, or no spot for us to be able to have classes in the winter, bringing students out there. Michael Bossier, our forester, does an excellent job. We just had Autobahn Society, as well as the Boys and Girls Club, came out and did tours down to the edge of the pond. I believe that was two weeks ago. He just had those out there. And those are things that we really want to continue to be able to do. I think bringing the inner-city kids to be able to visit the other half of the city, which Fall River is over 50% either water or forest land, to be able to visit the other half of the city that we have is something very instrumental. You know, as I said, this is something that's been talked about. Originally, the Bio Reserve was started back in 2001. It was signed into law through the legislation. The partners back then were the trustees of the reservation, the City of Fall River through the Water Department, as well as DCR, which had the Free Town State Forest. There's been multiple purchases of land just before CPC has been a great supporter of purchasing lands for open space out there. Some of the partners that we've talked about partnering with for this, for the Bio Reserve Discovery Center, Wetlands Trust, Durfee Career Technologies Program, as well as the Diamond Culinary Program, to be able to do farm-to-table type foods, BCC Sustainability Program, Mass Autobahn is very interested. We've had multiple conversations with them. Narragansett Bay Estuary Program, Appalachian Mountain Club, which we just brought on as partners about a year and a half ago within the Bio Reserve. DCR is also excited about the project, as well as the trustees of the reservation. We've had multiple discussions with, and they're really excited about seeing this move forward within the, within the Bio Reserve.
Thank you. Counsel in seat four, Counsel Kilby?
Thank you. This is wonderful. I looked at this as very, very closely related to Counsel Washington's very, very, very significant proposal, and congratulations to you. I plan on supporting that wholeheartedly. It's your first big one, and you started, you didn't start slow, so that's great. But I look at this in the same way. A number of years ago, when I first became elected official, I made a promise to myself, and I said this a couple of times in the past, when it comes to children, our youth, I'm going to support every single proposal that's before me. So I think this is a, and I didn't realize that 50% of our landmass, that's incredible. That's incredible. So I really, really look forward to this coming all together, and thank you, Kara, for your hard work. So we've got to get this done. So, Ayil, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel in seat one, Counsel Kadim?
Thank you. As I mentioned before, I support the project. It was just the funding mechanism associated with it, see if we could leverage. But I just do have one question. So in terms of, and I appreciate the background, you know, the breakdown of the costs associated with it, but long-term costs, where would we capture all that infrastructure cost, things of that nature, maintenance?
Yeah, so construction cost, again, ARPA, we're looking for this ARPA grant to pay for a portion of the construction cost, as well as CPC. Plan is to use Diamond in their program.
Yeah, I was thinking more.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that's where the partners are going to come into play, so trustees of the reservation, again, very interested partner. And they, if you look at some of the programs that they carry throughout the whole entire state, you know, they do full staffing and maintenance programs for things like this. Mass Autobahn is another partner that will be looking for, for long-term maintenance and sustainability for this project. You know, there will be additional maintenance by the Water Department and other departments within the city to keep this moving. keep this moving forward. Hope is, again, there's, you know, multiple different outsources whether, on how the programming goes, whether, you know, there's a future educational program that's tied to the school department or other, other types. But long-term maintenance plan is something, you know, sustainability of a project like this and a center like this is something that, that we are, you know, definitely consider to be able to maintain moving forward.
Perfect. You nailed my softball. I just wanted to just kind of highlight the fact that there are going to be some additional costs coming out of the Water Department budget. So I know we're quick to try to cut your budget, which is already a lean budget. So I just, you know, as we, it's important for us as, as councils, when we support these types of projects, to understand that there's also a long-term commitment that comes along with it. So, you know, I'll support it now, and I'll also support the long-term. Well, won't ask you to reduce the budget when you come before us. So with that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Anything further from the administration? Thank you. Item four is a resolution, City Council, to obligate $11 million of Bristol County ARPA funding for water and sewer infrastructure mandates. This was referred on July 12th. This was been by Council Vice President Dion.
Good evening. I think everybody pretty much knows where I stand, wanting to help the taxpayers. Mr. Furlan, can you tell me roughly how many millions of dollars in mandates we're looking at?
So yeah, currently, you know, we have a federal court order that is overseen by Conservation Law Foundation, which has a number of mandates to be completed before 2025. There are other potential mandates. There's changes within the lead and copper rule that are coming down, which will require work prior to 2024. On the list that I put together under federally mandated projects, either currently underway or will be completed is right in the $100 million range.
Now, when we get a mandate that says something has to be completed by 2025, it will be completed by 2025, what happens if it isn't?
So potentially, within our agreements under the amendment of the federal court order and our ACOs with EPA, there are fines attached if mandates are not met.
Okay. If we were, if this council were agreeable to invest this kind of money in the water and sewer infrastructure, is it, in your opinion, because I would consider you the expert on this matter, that the funding, the funds would absolutely be expended before this, before the ARPA expending deadline of December 31st, 2026?
Yes.
So there's no question, would be no money wasted?
You know, again, we already have the projects either under design, some under contract that would be eligible, that we're currently constructing, that are eligible for this funding to be used. As long as we haven't borrowed the money, as long as we haven't taken the money from the state on the projects that are under construction through the loan process, we'd be eligible to use this funding towards those projects.
And can you tell me what, because obviously, $20 million, if we were to bond for that, it would be a 20-year bond. Not only do we have to pay the bond, not only does it affect your debt service and your budget, but also the, there's interest involved as well. Can you tell me what not taking $20 million out of the taxpayers' pockets could essentially save them on their water bills?
Yeah. So again, you know, it's ratepayers that pay the bonds for water and sewer projects. So it's the water and sewer ratepayers. That's directly related to a, you know, number of cents on the CCF. Essentially, that's, that's how budgets break down. You know, if, if it was the $20 million based on an interest rate, you'd be talking anywhere from 50 cents up to 65 cents if it was a $20 million that we did not have to go out to bond for.
And that would be per CCF?
That would be per CCF, correct. And then, so there would be average savings to an average household over a 20-year period too. So that's not just a one-year savings. That would be a 20-year savings.
Right. That's long-term. Now, how much did our rates go up per CCF this, with this last vote to increase water and sewer?
It was eight cents for water and eight cents for sewer.
Okay. So we're talking 60 cents versus a lot more than what, what it went up this year. We'd be saving far more money.
Yes, over the long term. Again, just to keep in mind on how the borrowing works, that doesn't maybe that this coming year is going to be a 60 cent reduction on, you know, on what the potential rate increase would be. You know, when the project bonds come online over the next couple of years, so rather than having to bond for those projects, we'd be able to use this funding instead in that one. And so it would be a rollout over a couple of years.
Correct. So yes, so it wouldn't be immediately felt, but it would be felt for 20 years.
Correct.
I know, so eight cents this year, I have my last, I just got my new water bill, that eight cents, and it's always discussed on the floor, ah, it's a $20 increase for the year. No, it's not. Mine went up $30 in one quarter. And I only used three CCFs more of water. So that's $120 if I average it out for the year. So imagine what that type of money would save people on their water bills. It'd be very significant.
Yeah. You know, you'd be, you'd be talking, you know, again, it's, it's broken down, and I use the same calculation for the yearly savings that I do when I present to the council during the budget, which is 53 CCFs per year the average household uses. That's based off the calculations of our average households.
And with my usage this quarter, I'm under that. I'd only be at 48 for the year. And it went up $30 a quarter. So that's just a little bit of a perspective. Now, I know you were on the radio talking about how we need to increase salaries to attract workers, et cetera. So again, if this investment were to be made, and I get it, people aren't going to work for nothing. People need to feed their families. I think everybody gets that. And I don't think anybody, and, and there's councils all the time talking about how we have to pay more money. We have to pay more money. So again, this, if this investment were to be made, if this ARPA funding were to be utilized, wouldn't it, to a certain extent, offset that, that you might be able to increase salaries without the taxpayers getting whacked twice, once to increase salaries and once for the increase in the cost of water?
Yeah. Without the increase to debt service, again, that's, that would be a savings on the rate, you know, already preliminary, looking at the FY '24 budget, the rate increase is going to be substantial, I can tell you. Chemicals have gone up drastically. There's a lot of different elements that, that have come into play. And again, something that, that is being looked at, as you mentioned, is, is the, what, what employees get paid and trying to get employees properly licensed, properly qualified employees that we need to be able to maintain our system. So that is something that's going to be coming along this year. You know, this savings, again, isn't, potentially won't, may not affect this year's rate increase, but it would keep it down. So then you wouldn't have the burden of the rate increase from normal operational cost, as well as also the burden for the capital improvements that needed to be bonded out for.
And I know there's always discussions of grants, et cetera, and we do get grants. And I know you have a grant for the, for that lead initiative as well. But I think it's fair to say that our obligation and the projects that are upcoming far outweigh the dollar amount we're ever going to get in grants. I mean, the grants, I mean, not to say we don't need them and we aren't happy to have them. That's what I'm trying to say. But what does that represent? About 5% of the cost and we bear 95%?
Yeah. You know, and again, that's always a tough thing. I think every, all my board, my water board and my sewer commission know that I will climb over any mountain to try to get a grant so that, so that my ratepayers don't have to pay for something that we could potentially get a grant or use some other type of funding source for. And that's something that we try to do. But again, the grants that are out there are limited and they're very competitive. And there's a lot of other communities that are vying for those grants as well. So our grant's going to be, be able to fund all of our capital improvement needs? No.
No. No. Not even close. So this, so this type of investment would be, it's safe to say, very significant. And, and would have a great impact on the ratepayers and taxpayers of this city.
Yes, without a doubt.
Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat eight, Counsel Washington?
How are you doing, Mr. Furlan?
Good.
Good to see you again. So I just, you've got to educate me. What does CCF stand for? I think a lot of people want to know.
Nope. That's, that's perfectly fine. So a CCF, and it's, it's explained on the water bill, but it's 100 cubic feet. So that's a unit of measure of our water meters that are in the house. So every time the dial clicks is one CCF. So our rate is based on one CCF. So how many CCFs a house uses within a quarter, that's what they're built for.
And you're saying it's 20 to 60 cents per CCF savings if, if, if we used all the money that we have?
Well, so based on a $20 million evaluation, and I ran a couple of different iterations, because again, there's a lot of different things into play, what the interest rate would be on the loan that we're going out if we're eligible to get SRF, if we, granted SRF launch for the project, that's a lower 2%. Going rate is higher, and I expect it to be higher within the next couple of years based on the way that the economy is going. But at the $20 million, based on an interest rate, you're somewhere in the 40, you know, high 40 cents to 60 cents per CCF on the household. At the $11 million, if it was the balance of the Bristol County, you know, that cuts it down naturally, less than that. You'd be seeing somewhere 25 up to, up to 30, 40 cents.
Okay. So, and I respect that, you, you know, you just said you'd climb over mountains to get grants. So this would take a tremendous stress from you. I bet that would be fantastic. So my question would be, have you received other ARPA funding for these projects?
For the current projects that we have, no. So we have received ARPA funding. The Water Department has received ARPA funding. The ARPA committee from the city has committed $13 million, which we just went under contract for that, for water main replacement, 17,700 linear feet of water main replacement, replacement of the lead services on those, that are impacted on those streets from water main, as well as within those contracts will also be fully reconstructing these street sidewalks and curving that are affected by that water main replacement.
So we've already allocated 13 million to your department?
The, the city has allocated, yep.
So understandable. And have, is there any more funding coming down that you foresee for your department? Besides, let's say?
So, so there, again, there's a lot of grant funding sources that are out there that, that we're always looking at. You know, we have, we have a number of grants that are floating out there, some on later on tonight on the committee's agenda. You know, other grants that we do have out there, we have applied for one through the EPA for lead service removal. That was a $10 million grant, but that's a federally, and so that would take the full grant part from EPA's grant award, and that's a federally competitive grant. So it's throughout the whole.
Which are competitive, Graham, right?
I am, I am very competitive, and we submitted an excellent application.
Yes.
And, you know, that would be a great win for the city to be able to get that fund.
And that's a 10 million?
That's a 10 million.
And what are the other fundings that are out there?
So, you know, we have that, you know, again, CPC is a funding source that we always reach towards. So, you know, there's, there's a number of different grants that we have out there. But it's, you know, again, the grants do the same thing that ARPA does. It takes and it makes it so the burden doesn't go onto the rate.
So I want to state this first. I have a tremendous amount of respect to you. In my little, short, little tenure being on your board, I learned a lot, and you do a tremendous amount of work and probably one of the most difficult jobs in the city. There's a tremendous amount of work. So I understand the need to try to get all of the funding that you can possibly get. But I also understand that there are a lot of other needs in this city. So I couldn't support that, but I want, that doesn't reflect on what you're doing. And it's very comforting to me to know that $13 million of ARPA's already went to your committee, and there's other funding mechanisms out there. It is no way reflecting, and the community should know, the amazing work that you do and the amount of work that goes into your departments and the sleepless nights that we have all the time. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Counselor in seat seven?
Thank you. Mr. Furlan, in terms of the estimated increase of salaries, and I know you're planning for next year, what does that CCF increase look like to get people to where we, they need to be, to keep them and keep our water system going?
So, you know, any increase in salaries across the board would require ordinance increases as well as CB, contract and bargaining agreement adjustments and talk with the union. I don't know if it would be 100% appropriate to go into that without having contractual, like, have to ask the administration.
It wouldn't.
No.
I mean, I, I think it's a fair question, and I'd love to answer that, but I think it would require a level of speculation regarding union contracts, one of which is settled, the other is not settled, that I think might be inappropriate at this point. But if you can give us some time to, to sort of look at that and see what we can share, I think maybe at the next meeting, I could come with some, some thoughts on that.
Let, let me rephrase then. So you mentioned that next year's increases could be substantial?
Yes.
So, quote, quote me again, did you say somewhere around 50? What was the number you threw out a while ago?
So the, the number that I threw out was in relation to bonding that was going to come on, not necessarily increases for, for next fiscal year.
Okay.
And, you know, at this point, the way that, the way that the, everything laid out, by the time we got all the bids in for all of our materials and chemicals and everything for the FY '23 budget, I, I see that FY '24 is going to be highly impacted just in those fixed operational costs. How that overall impacts, right now, the market is so volatile, fuel going up and down, everything else involved. I think it's tough to be able to speculate. In a couple of months, that's when I need to start speculating to build my budgets in December, in January, and that's when we'll be able to put that together.
So based on those fixed costs, it's probably safe to say that it's not going to be a 2 cent increase?
No, it will not.
It's going to be more than that. So really, what we need to do is really look at how we can alleviate the blow. It's not going to be, we're not going to reduce the rates. I think we need to understand that. But if we can at least level, that's what we're looking to do. But at the same time, we're here to try to keep what we have going. And I think, and this is, so I went to the Azores for 10 days, first time I ever left the country. And you learn one thing, the amazing things we have here that a lot of places don't. And you then grow a little bit more appreciative of what you have. So I think it's important for us to understand that what we have, a lot of places don't. And if we don't invest the proper money to keep it that way, we're going to have a huge problem on our hands.
Without a doubt.
So I think it's important that when we have the opportunity to invest and assist in what we're doing, we should. There's a second question. At the end of Madam Vice President's resolution, talking about the call for an additional $9 million, what would an additional $9 million do for you?
So again, you know, that would be to offset, rather than bonding out for, for projects, it would be to offset that bonding. So essentially, we wouldn't have to burden the ratepayers with the 20-year repayment of the loans for that $9 million.
I yield. Thank you.
Counselor in seat six?
Yeah. Okay. So it's 50 cents per CCF that you think this money will do. But then next year, there's going to be a substantial increase. So the 50 cents isn't going to be there anymore. That doesn't make sense. And you talk about the $9 million, and the $9 million, we don't even have control over that $9 million. That's ARPA money. How much have you gotten altogether between the 13 million from ARPA and the 1.6 for infrastructure? and the 1.6 for infrastructure, for flooding? These are grants that you got. The 390, 379,000 to clean the South Water Tupper, which I agree we need to do. Some of these, I agree, we need to do them. 148.5 to design and permit Sori Pond's Dam. I mean, that's all money you got. What other grants are you applying for, et cetera? And I know that when the state came down and looked at the Water Department, they said we're failing in three areas. One was staffing, one was finances, and one was management. We just don't have enough people. I think you try to do your best with what you have. Now, if you get, let's say, the, the mayor or the Opera Committee decides to give that extra nine, even though you already got 13, and we decide to give the 11. Am I going to be able to drive my car on Stafford Road or to Tiffany Drive on a rainy day and not have my car flooded in water? Am I going to be able to do that?
So Stafford Square, again, currently isn't part of the administrative consent order or the Conservation Law Foundation, the federal court order. So that project currently is not slated. So no, that does not fix it.
That's not going to fix it.
But, you know, again, it's, you know, what's involved with, with the projects that need to be done is sewer separation within the Birch Street drainage area. That's required by the federal court order in our ACO.
I didn't advocate for the CSO. I wanted sewer separation.
Yep.
Because I thought you'd pay a little more, but in the end, you'd have a city that sewer goes one way, water goes the other way.
Yep.
But they didn't want to listen to me then, so.
Yep. Some of the other projects, Ferry Street Pump Station, the city pier preparation, Alton Street preparation for CSO facilities. Lead service removal is, I'm expecting that.
That one is a grant you got?
So.
Is that a grant?
The, the grant that I did get was in relation to $100,000 for.
Inventory.
Right, required inventory and MAP. We also just received a $750,000 loan, but it'll be 100% principal forgiveness through the SRF program in relation to lead service and, and lead service removal. But those are all requirements through the revised lead-in copper rule. What's being done with those grants needs to be completed by when the rule goes into effect in 2024. I expect that, you know, EPA and DEP are very, we're in discussions with them right now about accelerating lead service removal throughout the city for all of the balance of the lead services, both on the private side from the curb stop into the house, as well as from the ones that are left from the main to the curb stop.
I, I just feel that, you know, the Water Department has gotten a lot of money. And to look at 11 million, 11 million, because we really can't. And this council can't take a vote on the 9 million, because we have no control over it. We know that. But the 11 million, what else could we do that is really going to play out and give people something for a long time? You know, this money, I don't see it saving as much as we think. You just said yourself that next year, we might have a substantial increase. So if you're telling me now it's going to be 50 cents on, you know, a CCF, but next year, we're going to, how much is that going to do? We don't know what the market is for bonding. I, I wonder, Ms. Allman, if you have anything to add to this?
So.
With the, with the finance piece?
I mean, of course, we all advocate for all of, but Seth and my job is to advocate for all of the departments. And so being a gateway community, I feel like there should be opportunities to go back to the federal government and really put pressure on to help them move some of these CSO projects. I think that if we put some, all of this money towards this, it reduces our opportunity to get loan forgiveness programs and other additional grants. I feel like we need to maximize all opportunities, and we, you know, we've allocated money already. I think we need to see where the rest of these grant programs play out. And we still have more time to look at some Opera funding and see what other opportunities we can put money and allocate it to other places as well.
I was a little confused, because I thought, and I know that the Opera regulations have changed over time. But initially, I always thought that you can't use Opera money to pay off something that you've already started.
Correct.
So if the CSO was already something that started, can we put money into it? Or is it because these are different projects then? But I'm listening to, you know, be, I'm hearing that it's to continue to do some of the CSO work.
Yes.
So we really can't. The CSO work, we already have that as something that we're doing. Are we eligible to pay for that, or is there other things? That's why I asked about Stafford Road and Warren Street was a disaster the last, I mean, and I get it, the rain came down really fast, nobody's fault, but that happened. But when I look at, you know, the couple that came here from Tiffany Drive with the flooding issue they had, you know, you got $13 million from Opera. We're going to give another, you know, another 11 million, and, you know, maybe another nine, another 20. So, you know, you have $33 million, and this, these poor people still aren't going to get an issue resolved for them. And, and I understand about the salary increases and people that need certain licenses. And if the city is paying for somebody to get their license to a higher degree, then maybe they have to agree that they will remain working for the city for X amount of years, not come in, we pay for something, and then they leave. But, you know, and then we have, and I have a resolution for that later. We have the odor that's coming again in the South End. And I spoke to former Council Pat Casey, because people usually in the South End in that area will gravitate to her. And she said, I have a really good relationship. I'm going to check with them. And their clarifier broke down, and they had to, and then we received a letter from Mr. Ferland, an email that some of the equipment there is old. So I don't know what you're planning on doing to upgrade that equipment. I mean, is there a grant out there for that? Or I'm, I'm just wanting to reduce things for people. But I think that if you're going to reduce and make it like, oh, yeah, you're going to save 50 cents per CF, CCF, but then next year, it's going to go up. What is the savings going to be? And I don't know with Mrs. Allman, what are the interest rates going to be when we bond? Are they going to be higher, are they going to be lower?
Well, so I can't predict the future, otherwise I wouldn't be here, probably.
I can't predict the future.
So, based on talking to our securities advisors, right now, the rates are anywhere from 3.25% to 3.5% for a 20- to 30-year bond. So we ran some numbers with Mr. Ferland, and basically, if we were to do the 11 million and we were to do it under 2% under a CSO project, he predicted it'd be approximately about maybe 150 a year, and that's a little on the high side. And all the way up to a 6%, we're saying maybe about $360 a year. A 360 for the 20 years.
Is that per household?
So it's 150 for over 20 years per household. So it's about $11.31 a year per household.
Does each household save 150 for the next 20 years?
Over the total of 20 years. So it's about $11 a year.
Okay.
Over the total of 11, over the total.
Yeah, over 20 years, yeah.
Does each household save $11 for the next 20 years?
$11 up to $18. Yeah.
Thank you.
With that, I yield, thank you.
Seat three, Council President LaMond.
Thank you. So we have a math problem, really, because we don't have funds for all of these things that are in front of us even tonight. The bio reserve, we've already, at our last meeting, we already allocated 3.2 million with the sweet sweep, street sweepers and body cameras and graffiti machines. The bio reserve is back in front of us that, you know, we have the youth initiative, the skating rink. I've been speaking with the mayor and Mike Dionne about finishing the splash pad, which the demo was started, was given CPA funds back in 2016 for Kennedy Park. And we've got the updated quotes on that, so we just don't have the ability to say yes to all these things. Mr. Ferland, did you say at one of our last meetings, it might have been last term, that it would be about 40 million to fix the entire Stafford Square issue and Tiffany Drive?
Roughly about 42 to 45 million, yeah.
So this 11 and 9, does that chip away at that, or is that completely separate?
No, so again, we don't, that project's not slated to be, to be done right now. There is other funding sources that we're looking at for that project, but we don't have anything in place as of now.
Okay. So, you know, we, I know this council wants to support giving you funding and being able to provide a savings to taxpayers. We've, we've talked about this. We, we held up the water rates for how long, last term, a very long time. You know, to make a point that we really want to be able to pass this savings along, and we know it's not going to happen immediately, but it will happen over time if we start allocating funds. When I had spoke to the mayor when Council Vice President was putting this resolution in, he had said at that point that he had not committed any of the second deposit of, of Opera funding. Hasn't made any commitments to that. But where, where is the administration on, you know, half of this is, is sending a letter asking for 9 million for the administration to commit 9 million? Where is the administration? What are they feeling on that?
So the administration, and this is a, it's a challenging position to be in, because obviously, we want to support Mr. Ferland. We, we certainly want the quality and access to water to be his very best here in the city. But like CFO Allman said, we have to look at all of the needs of the city. And this is one where Mr. Ferland and I are fortunately a little bit at odds, as reasonable people can be in a respectful way. And so he's an excellent advocate for his department. I respect a lot what he does, and I think he's a really talented water manager. And so his opinion certainly carries a great deal of weight. That said, the administration is not in favor, really even of the entire 11 million going to water. And the reason for that is, really comes down to return on investment. The projects that might affect the most visible change, like Stafford Square, Tiffany Drive, things like that, are not really touchable with this money. That, those projects have already been defined for us by court orders. They're important projects, but they, they probably, in the long run, wouldn't sort of visibly and from an experience standpoint, change the quality of life for residents in the city. And on top of that, the savings, or at least the suppression of the increase, it's not really a savings, it's, it's a lack of an increase, amounts to maybe less than a dollar per month for the average homeowner. And so, you know, not to say water's not important, it's incredibly important. But there's other things that we feel there would be a more tangible benefit to city residents if we did with this money. Now, I will reiterate what I said the very first time we talked about county money. The mayor is committed to this council, having complete set discretion as to what it does with this county money. So I'm just telling you what the, what the preference of the administration is. But it's that if there is an amount, that amount does not include city money, does not include the 9 million, we would not be in favor of that. And something lesser than the 11 million, because we just feel there's other cap, there's other projects that are, that are really worthy. At this point, if you look at the entire amount, county money and city money together, it's about $90 million. And if you imagine that at this point, water has received 13 million of that, that's actually a fairly significant percentage when you consider the other needs there might be in the city. So that's really the concern. It's not enough of a return on the investment that would impact immediately quality of life in the city for residents, even though the projects themselves are very worthy. We just feel like there's, there's other ways in addition to this that we'd want to see the money spent.
Okay. I, I do have to disagree. The, the folks that I saw last Tuesday or Wednesday waist-deep in pushing their cars out of Stafford Square might, might disagree with you on their quality of life that day with the flooding. But, you know, we do have other things that are in front of us, and when we get to this. So are you saying, remind me, the, the council, you need five sign-offs of the, of the council? And, and it needs to be in cooperation and collaboration with the administration? So if this council was to vote for, you know, 8 million to go to that, is, is the administration not going to sign off on that?
8 million of county money? This administration will not stand in the way of anything that this council wants to do with county money.
Okay.
We stand by the idea that this, this money is the council's to, to do with what they will for the betterment of the city.
And then my question would be, I know there are counselors, myself included, that have approached the administration with either finishing projects or, or their ideas for projects for this Bristol County money. And if that money is all allocated this evening with what's in front of us and, and possibly this as well, what are the chances that that is going to be approved in the, the other Opera funds?
So we've said before that no proposal will get, you know, denied out of hand. It would go to the committee. So I think that any proposals that would want to, that would come out of this council would go forward as an ordinary proposal. The committee would get to, to discuss it and vote on it. Whoever the sponsor of that proposal would be would have the opportunity to talk about it. And it would just go through the process as it, as it ordinarily would for the, the, the rest of that 35 million plus. There's lost revenue, and there's a number of other leftover monies from the first 35 million. But it would go through that process, and, and again, the administration would not look to, to put its thumb on the scale there. It would just go through the process in the ordinary way.
Okay. All right. I mean, you know, everything in front of us is, is worthwhile. The bio reserve is, is a great project, the youth, the youth initiative. I was like, $2 million, that seems like an awful lot of money. But as every parent came down, I'm like, that, that's talking about my son, talking about my son. I'm fortunate enough that, you know, I, I would be able to pay for him to go to Love's Boxing, which I can already tell you I'll be there before the end of the week, because that was my son. But there's a lot of people that aren't fortunate, that wouldn't be able to do that. And the amount of kids that, that can be affected in a, in a good, positive way by that, you know, how do you say no to that? The skating rink at Kennedy Park is, it's a no-brainer. I mean, we, I've tried to get reservations at, at the Providence Rink, and it's, it's almost impossible, especially if you want to do the ice bumper cars, forget it. You have to do months in advance, and, you know, trying to get four tickets, forget it. So that's something that's going to bring, you know, something for families and kids to do at Kennedy Park, and then it's going to bring revenue in. I mean, if we're traveling to Providence, people are going to, they're going to come here, so. I think that is, that's all for now. I, I'll yield, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor in seat two?
Thank you. So I said at the last meeting, when we talked about this, we were talking about the fact that the federal government abandoned us. And I know you brought up that maybe we should talk to the federal government and pay for it. Because when this project first started, the CSO project, they were giving us a lot of money to cover the cost and help expand it. Again, it was Bonnie Frank, Jim McGovern. Jim McGovern's now in another district, Bonnie Frank's no longer here. We have a new congressman. Does anyone have plans for Thursday at 10 o'clock in the morning? You guys all free? Can you make yourselves free? Because you don't have to go to Washington to talk to your congressman. He's going to be in Florida. This Thursday at 10 o'clock in the morning for coffee and conversation. And I think we should have everybody go sign up to the website, tell the congressman we're going to be there Thursday, and talk to him seriously. And it's not just him, other people involved as well. Let's bring them back and tell them that, look, we've been struggling with this for a long time. Flint, Michigan had an issue similar to ours, if not worse, and they took care of it. They're funding them, they're giving them a lot of money. And people there are no better than us, right? We struggle, we are a poor community. So we should really, I agree, as I said in the last meeting, we should make every effort we can to reach out to our senators and our congressmen and tell them that although maybe, you know, you didn't know about this, because he's a young guy and he didn't really understand the history of this, but maybe we should revisit this and go back and make some serious efforts with the local delegation, with the senators, with everyone on boards and the projects. And let's remind them that the people here are still struggling, and we still have to obey by their mandate, and we need help paying for it. Because at the end of the day, it's who's going to pay for it, right? The money that we're looking to put here, that the federal government has given us in Opera money, well, that's our money we pay federal taxes, correct? So why don't we use that money for this, as well as local money and everything else? It's whether we save them $11 a year for the next 20 years, or whether we save them $5, right, Mr. Ferland? What did you say the rate was going to be, $0.50, it's going to be $11? What are the calculations you did?
Yeah, so it all, again, it all depends on, if you use the $11 million, which the council obligated, it would be roughly about 11, over $11 per year.
When you came before us for the budget, we had an 8 cent increase in the rates, correct?
Yes.
What's that going to add to the people for the next 20 years?
So that, that was roughly about same, using the same numbers for the calculation, was about $5.5 per year.
$5. And yet, there are people here that didn't support that, $5 increase for the year, right? So it's tough to get money if you're the Obama. So, it's tough to get money if you have the problem.
Without a doubt.
And there's been other councils here that have not been supportive of the water department, and they vote against your budget every year. What would you have done if that didn't go through? Six councils or five councils had not supported your budget? What kind of position would you be in?
You know, again, a lot tougher position than we're already in right now, because, you know, and I've laid it out in the past, Mr. Sullivan has, I have, you know, you end up with issues where, you know, the DPEPA comes in and starts to, you know, starts to take over and
Oh, it's just it. And then guess what? Guess what? The rate's going to be out of our control.
That's 100%. They tell you what the rate's going to be.
It's going to skyrocket, correct. So, that's why I've always supported the water department. And one of the resolutions I first filed about the water management was going phenomenally well. It's doing well, and the council always supported it, and we've made remarkable strides. When will that end? A few more years? When does that?
So, currently, our current capital improvement plan on water carries us out to 2035.
And in the past, to your, when you made the comment earlier, we have gone to court and asked the federal government to extend the CSO project out further and to say, because we couldn't afford to do it. And they've agreed with us, and they said, yeah, you know, it's too much of a burden. We have to expand the CSO project, and that's the only way we've been able to make this work. Other than that, it should have been probably completed by now, or it should have been when it first started.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Original, we're on our 14th amendment to the federal court order.
Correct. And I remember when that first came about, and we were involved in it, and Council Palatier was involved as well, and Council Pereira was probably here prior to that. It was tough. It was not easy. People had voted against it and not want to support it, and then it just added to the price. So, I've always supported the water department. I know how hard Mr. Sullivan's worked, I know how I do work, I know how crucial essential it is to our community. That's one of our greatest assets, it's community, believe it or not. We have one of the finest drinking waters in the entire state, and the problem is just tunneling it to the residents. Let's get it there in the same manner that it comes out from the ponds from. So, regardless, someone's going to pay for it. You're not going to run away from doing the job, not going to get away from improving the quality of the water and getting it to the residents. These projects that you have are not going to go away if the council decides not to give it a 20 million, 11 million, or 5 million. We still have to do it. The fact of the matter is, we have to understand and decide who's going to pay for it. Is it going to be strictly the residents of Fall River? Or are we going to have the federal government with all the tax money they get from everybody to kick in? Or is it local, state money to kick in? Is it going to be grants? Someone's going to pay for it, and I'm trying to do what everyone else is trying to do, ease the burden on our taxpayers as much as possible, because we do pay state taxes and federal taxes and everything else. And we have to remind those people that spend the money, that send the money, billions and millions, to other countries and everywhere else. We still have a community here that needs the help that we were promised we were going to get a long time ago, and they've turned their back on communities and towns like Fall River, and that's sad. So, I think we should, Thursday at 10:00, call the congressman, go have your cup of coffee, it's free, free coffee, free patients, it's going to be in Fall River. Make an appointment. It doesn't say where, it says when you make your confirmation, when you make an appointment.
You get your ticket.
They'll tell you where it's going to be. So, in other words, if 1,000 people show up, it'll be a small place. If 2,000 people show up, it'll be a bigger venue. So, it sounds funny, but honestly, we need to start calling our congressman. If he's going to be in the city, let's start talking to him. And I says to everyone else, because we can't afford to go at this rate anymore. Everything's getting more expensive. Milk, eggs, you name it. Even this project is getting more expensive. And they have to understand that, and I don't think they do. I think they probably, it's on the back burner, because when was the last time you had a conversation with anyone in that capacity?
So, in that
Don't tell me yesterday, because I'll be very disappointed.
No, it wasn't yesterday. You know, the federal government, I believe it was a little over a year ago, I had meetings with a couple of them. Jake Orkin Claus's office, probably about six months ago. I do have to say, the administration has, the mayor has told me he has had conversations. We do have two federal earmarks in as well, but whether those will be approved is still to be determined.
That's what we need to do. Have people more accountable, and let's make sure that they're well aware of our predicament, because I'm not sure they are. I know the mayor probably had a conversation with them, but I think other people need to do it as well, and remind them.
Yep.
I think I've said enough. With that, I yield. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor in seat three, council vice president.
Yeah. When I hear $5 a year, $11 a year, when my bill went up $30 and a quarter for an 8 cent raise, I find that hard to believe. That represents $120 a year, and I'm sure, and if I go back and pull out all my, I have all my water bills, I have all my, for years. I save it because of taxes. And every time, there's an increase, it goes up far more than $20 a year, or $11 a year. So, I just wanted to make that comment. In terms of the bio reserve, that doesn't affect this resolution. That was in the end, there was 16 million and change, that was part of the four and a half or five million that was going to be, or four, four and change.
Four, five.
That was going to be deducted. So, that does not, if you vote yes for that, that doesn't affect anything. Of the $13 million that you've been given, how much of that actually went into sidewalk repair?
I have it broken down from roadway reconstruction and water main replacement. So, you probably, about $5 million of actual water main replacement, and about $5 million of the street reconstruction, pavement, sidewalks, curbing, of those affected streets that were being done.
So, it's completely disingenuous to tell the people of this city that $13 million of ARPA money was given to the water department for water projects, when at least half of that money did not have anything to do with the water, or water mains, or anything else. It went into road and sidewalk repair, because when you took, when you replaced those mains, you interrupted the sidewalk or the roadway, which allowed you to repair it when you were done.
With respect, counselor, I would really object to that characterization respectfully. In order to do the work, you have to disrupt the road, you have to open the road.
That's what I just said.
But that's the entire project. Like, to say, you know, only that which affected a pipe is water repair, it's not. I mean, what the water repair is, the opening of the road, the repair of the pipe, and then the closing of the road.
Okay. But at the same token, to say 13 million went strictly to the water department for water repair, that's not accurate either.
It's absolutely accurate. It is
Not when you pay to repair sidewalks.
Okay. We'll have to agree to disagree, but I can't, I think disingenuous is just such an unfortunate term. It's not disingenuous at all. It is the project. It's required, it's necessary. We can't leave the roads open once we are satisfied that the pipes are working. That's just my, you know, I just, you know.
So, I guess, I guess opposed to these other projects, it would be strictly a project, and it would be, they're different projects that the money would go strictly to the project.
I don't know that it would be any different at all than the 13 million.
When you're doing pump houses and that sort of thing.
But the 15% of ARPA money that's, of total ARPA money, it's already been committed to water, which is 13 million of the total 90 million, would be no different than whatever amount of money this council wants to commit from the county ARPA money, because that would also require that some road repair, some openings, some repairs, that sort of thing, to leave it the same, so that, you know, we don't have residents calling about terrible roads instead of terrible water. I mean, you got to do the whole thing. And so, I think whatever amount of money this council wants to commit from county money, whether it's 11 million or some lesser, so we could do some other really worthy projects, I think it's going to be very similar to the 13 million, where, you know, some of it's infrastructure, some of it's water, or some of it's just the cost of doing business, and we're going to do the very best we can to keep those costs down.
Yeah, I'm sure a percentage will. I don't disagree with that. I just wanted to point out the fact that it's a bigger picture than it was coming across as, that's all. And with that, I yield.
If it's used for, let's say, a pump station, a lot more of the money would go directly onto the project on that site and not to other things that are affected due to the project.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat one, counsel Kadim.
Thank you. I was actually just going to say exactly what my colleague in seat two had said, and use the exact example in terms of, you know, the 8 cent increase and what the impact is to the taxpayers, because, you know, I think we need to put things into perspective, because we tend to forget, you know, every time budget time comes down, what we're doing to water and sewer, and what the statements that are being made, that we want to save the ratepayers, we want to save money for the taxpayers. And here, we have an opportunity to use a lot of money coming down from the federal government that we're never going to see again in our lifetime. So, there are projects that are, we constantly talk about, that are put on the back burner, and I appreciate everything that the administration's saying. I think we've got to work together and start talking about getting these projects funded, because they're going to get funded at some point, and when they do get funded, it's going to be on the backs of the taxpayers and the ratepayers. So, we now have the opportunity to kind of try to find that happy medium, where we're providing services with the money that are coming in, but also improving the infrastructure that is so desperately needed to be improved, that we've been doing year in and year out. And my colleague in seat two, you know, him and his colleagues, when they first initiated the water main replacements, you know, that has been, I think we're at, what, phase 20-something now, 20?
21.
21. So, 21 years ago, we're talking about that, right? So, we have an opportunity to have such an impact with the community, similar to what my colleague in seat two did 21 years ago, right? And I think we can't lose sight of that. So, we hear constituents come before us complaining about quality of life issues, and we just need to figure out what works, what doesn't work. You know, there's 72, $70 million that was appropriated, that we just need to kind of figure out how we want to do it. And I think when we're looking at it from a ratepayer standpoint or a taxpayer standpoint, I think you can point to these projects and put a dollar amount of savings immediately, right, to each project. And I know, again, $11 over a 20-year period isn't a lot, I don't disagree. But compound that with the increases that your department's going to be looking for, right? So, it's going to be $11 over 20 years, plus everything else that we're continuously putting onto the taxpayers, plus the 2.5%, plus the inflation. You want to talk about trying to retain people. I mean, I know you folks know this better than anybody at the table. It's hard to retain people, it's hard to recruit people, you know, both in public safety and just municipal government in general. We're not, we're not seeing folks, you know, kicking down the door to apply for jobs in the public sector. So, I think we've got to be cognizant of that. So, that means now we've got to be really competitive with other communities, and in doing so, that means salaries are going to have to increase, additional benefits are going to have to increase. And at some point, again, that all falls on the, you know, the taxpayers and the ratepayers. So, that's where we get our money. We're not selling widgets and can't increase, you know, our profit and our margins, right? We raise taxes and we raise fees, that's how we get our revenues. So, I just, I think the resolution before us is a good resolution. I think it still leaves a lot of money on the table to do a lot of different projects, but still have an impact to the residents. So, you know, I appreciate what the administration's saying, I will support this. I think we've been saying that we want to support water and sewer, and it's been a long time coming. I mean, we've been talking to congressmen and to the federal delegation to no avail. I mean, once Bonnie Frank left, I mean, we lost all of our real cachet that we had down there in terms of being able to truly bring funding back in. He was a man that was, you know, it was amazing to see him come in, you know, disheveled his ties sideways, his coat jackets up. You get him in a room, and that guy could get you money, right? And it's one of those things, and we lost, we lost a great asset. So, I don't know that we're going to continue to see that, we're going to see that again, right? So, I say, we try to do everything we can, working with the administration, to leverage the monies. If it's Bristol County, then let's talk about, see how we can get the Bristol County monies. I think you folks did a great job. I wasn't 100% convinced that you were going to get some approvals, so you did get the approval, so I applaud you for that. And I think if we can work together to try to get some of those monies, then let's get to the table and work on it. But we need to do something, and I think the time's now. So, with that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat eight, council Washington.
Mr. Ferland, is it fair to say that you can't fix a pipe without opening up a road?
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to fix a water main break or replace a water main without opening up the pavement, unless it's not in the pavement.
Right. Is it fair to say that you have to close that road, you know, once that pipe is fixed?
Yeah. You know, currently, historically, we have different types of pavement repairs that we do to the roadway, you know, as with the gas company has different type of pavement repairs we do to the roadway.
It's a package deal, right? Fix a pipe, open the road, close the road, it's a package deal.
Yep. There is always some restoration that needs to be done, it's just the level of restoration.
So, it's fair to say that, you know, 13 million that was used was used to fix pipes, sidewalks?
You know, again, it's, you know, it's the, when you break down the construction bid, you're looking at roughly about $5 million going towards water main replacement, flood service, removal, and stuff like that. And then there's the other half going towards the restoration portion of the project. If it was one of our standard water main replacement projects, that restoration portion would be lower, because we don't do full with pavement and sidewalks and full curbing and everything. But there is always some cost associated to that.
You just can't do one without the other, right?
There is. Yep. There always is a restoration.
All right. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five, council Palatier.
Thank you. Problems 25 years ago, 20 years ago, 15 years ago, it all comes down to money. Terry Sullivan has done a real good job handling everything he had to do and teaching you everything that you must know to run the water department. And I feel that you lost help because of money, even the city. How many guys are you down now?
So, we're still currently down five operated, excuse me, three operators, as well as one maintenance person down at the water treatment plant, and I believe we're down six now within the maintenance division.
All right. I get the picture. I get the picture. But the only way that you can keep people is to have money to pay them. And how do we get money to pay them? You've got to raise the rates. And the big problem I got, you come here, no matter when you come here, you've got the book in front of you, you've got the other book in front of you, and we ask you questions, and you just pick up the page and you got the answers. Whether it be Stafford Square, or the flooding, or whatever, the reservation, the piece of property that you bought there. You know what scares me is you, Mr. Ferland. You scare me, because you're not getting the right money for the job you're doing. And I talked to the mayor a couple of times about you, and I think you're just hanging in there. And if they don't pay you the right money to run the water department, and I know for a fact that any other community would grab you just like this. They probably call you up once a month, but I know you're dedicated to the city of Fall River. I know you do a good job. I know you're trying to get all the help you can with the right paperwork, but without the money, you've got nobody to do the job to replace you. I don't know what you make, 130, 120, whatever it is, but there's a lot of other places that pay a lot more, a lot more. Could you tell us a few that probably make 150, 160, 170? Do multiple jobs, no, one job. How many, how many jobs do you do?
So, yeah, I oversee the water and sewer.
Yeah.
Stormwater. For our department, we do a lot of purchasing in-house. I'm a certified purchasing agent. I'm an EIT just before the PE, licensed water operator and wastewater operator.
There you go. So, I mean, you've got to get paid for the job that you do. I'd hate to lose you, and I'd like to see people that work for you, and everybody here in the city. We have people that left and went someplace else, I said it a month ago, and they make more money already. And a guy like you, and Mr. Sullivan, that taught you everything throughout the city[1704.66] And a guy like you, and Mr. Sullivan, that taught you everything throughout the city of Fall River, is worth a lot more. And I know you like the city, I know you would like to stay here, and I, I get that in my mind, that we're going to bring somebody else in if you go. And no doubt in my mind, if you don't get more money, you're going anyway. So, you bring the new guy in, and, and Joe will give you one twenty, one thirty, yeah, okay, maybe you can't get him, I don't know, why would they leave? But, uh, you got the DPW that we're going to bring somebody in from New Bedford, and they talk to him, hey, we'll, we'll match the money the city was going to give you. Are we waiting for that to go that far, when you got a person like you, knows the job, knows what to do, he just needs the money? If it's opera money or, or whatever, we've got to get the money to satisfy you and the work that the workers do. And I said it before, I'll say it again, a city without water is nothing, you can't do nothing without water. And, uh, like, uh, he went, my colleague Andrew here said he went to where?
Azos.
Azos. The biggest thing, I guess, the way he talks, they got problems with water. Here, we're all the water we want, we just can't get the help, and, and the monies, uh, to do the right thing, and that, and that's the right thing. You know, uh, down the road, it's going to be the same thing, but you've got to address it now. The mayor's got to understand that, uh, if we don't pay some of these guys, we're going to lose them. Never had a problem with you, never had a problem with Terry. But Terry used to come in when he was kind of sick of, sick of asking for money, he says, "Councillors, here's the thing, you don't want to do it, you don't want to spend the money, oh, well, then good, then things are going to happen." And then my colleagues would say, "Okay, we have to go with it, we have to go with it," it's the same thing. I mean, uh, opera money, any money that we give you to get the help that you got, I mean, to be down six people? If you get a, a main break, you've got people to work and, and, and take care of that problem?
Uh, it's tough, we scramble for people, and sometimes we have to get a contractor.
Yeah, and outside contractor, and then you've got to pay them, and they're not paying our guys, you're paying top dollar, and the city's getting in the bill, and they're going to pay anyway. So, that's the way I feel about the water department, you, and the workers that you don't have or should have, and there should be a, a, a strong sense of urgency to say, "Hey, we've got to get them, can't blame you." You want to blame the administration that gave you enough money, you can blame them, he's on the sixth floor, you do what you have to do, you just can't get the help with the money, that's all. So, that's my piece about the water and everything else, and I want you to stick around. So, you've got a problem, I'll talk to him, we'll, we'll, we'll straighten things out. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Is there anything further from the Council? Councilor in seat seven, Councilor Poso.
And ju, and just to clarify, you know, the, the experience that I had last week was more of a, you don't know what you have until you're not next to it anymore. So, again, it's a valuable resource, how many places have a beautiful municipal water supply that we do? And, and I think in, again, I'm, I'm going to play the new guy line here, but it's like we dangle it sometimes, oh, we're going to support it, or maybe not, or maybe a little bit, we can't do that, we can't afford to do that, because if we get to a situation where we don't have it, then what? And then we're going to have this room filled with people who can't turn their faucet on because their water is dirty, or it doesn't work. And then what? Long-term planning, it's as simple as that. I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the Council? Councilor in seat two.
I just want Councilor Perretier to call my boss, because I do multiple jobs too. I'm sure you're in the room.
I was going to say the same thing, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta select my meeting tomorrow.
Give him his number, I want you to call him.
You got my support.
And on next meeting, with that I yield.
I do appreciate the kind words from all the council members, thank you.
Is there anything further from the Council, or the administration? Uh, this is in finance for discussion, so, um, if, if the, if the, will the Council afford the resolution to, uh, full counsel?
Needs to be referred, is that what you're saying? Motion to refer.
Yes, it's not on, it's not on our agenda.
Motion to refer full counsel?
Second.
Motion to refer to full counsel made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Kadim, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Still voted. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn finance?
Motion to adjourn finance made by Councilor Poso.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Kadim, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five-minute reset. Fall River City Council will now come to order. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadim?
Here.
Kamara?
Here.
Deon?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Perretier?
Yeah.
Pereira?
Here.
Reposo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
And President La Liberty LeBeau?
Here.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting.
Pledge, silent prayer pledge.
Oh, sorry, I was doing the open meeting law first, sorry. Everybody in the chamber, please, uh, rise for a moment of silent prayer, and, uh...
Dedicate this prayer to our former colleague, Dan Bogan.
Yes, and the, uh, clerk is going to read something.
Daniel Bogan, eighty-nine of Fall River, former mayor of Fall River who passed away on July sixteen, two thousand twenty-two, surrounded by his loving family. Daniel Bogan was part of the fabric of Fall River, he served as a member of the city council for twenty-two years, fourteen of those as his, as its president. A graduate of Durfee High School, he was an outstanding athlete in both football and track. Dan proudly served his country during the Korean War as a member of the U.S. Army. Following his military service, he graduated from UMass Dartmouth. A strong proponent of education, he established scholarships at both Bristol Community College as well as UMass. He served both on the UMass Board of Trustees and the UMass Foundation. Daniel Bogan was the owner and CEO of Boardin Remington Corporation, which he revitalized to become a major player in the New England chemical market. He was honored as Entrepreneur of the Year in nineteen eighty-eight, and was recognized as a moving force in this area by Southeastern Massachusetts University's Small Business Development Center. Dan was involved in many organizations which benefited Fall River, including Elks Lodge One Eighteen, Charlton Memorial Hospital, and the Chamber of Commerce, to name just a few. He is survived by his beloved wife Jean, his five children, and ten grandchildren.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Remain standing for a salute to the flag.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk?
The first item, excuse me, the first item before you is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the reappointment of Ann O'Neil Souza to the Commission on Disability.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Councilor Kamara, seconded by Councilor Pereira, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Still voted.
The second is the mayor's request for the reappointment of Mark Nassif Jr. to the retirement board.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Councilor Reposo, seconded by Councilor Pereira, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Still voted.
Of the mayor's communication and the response from the Director of Financial Services regarding the balance in the Bank Street, Columbia Street, Capital Project account.
To adopt, let's have a vote.
Motion accepted, placed on file plate, made by Councilor Kilby?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Reposo, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Still voted.
Item number four A was the original proposal that related to the Bristol County ARPA funding in the amount of one million, three hundred sixty-five thousand dollars for the Bio Reserve Discovery Center.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to lift from the table?
Motion to lift from the table made by Council Vice President Deon, seconded by Councilor Kilby.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Councilor Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by...
Would this be to adopt the amended proposal that was sent before the council?
Yes, motion to adopt as amended.
Motion to adopt as amended made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Council Vice President Deon, any discussion? Councilor in seat two, Councilor Kamara.
The amendment being the number of employees?
Madam Clerk? No.
This was a new amended proposal that was sent down by the, um, by the ARPA coordinator.
Oh, the one with the different breakdown?
For the funding, right?
Funding source.
All right, no problem, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Still voted.
Item five is a communication from the mayor requesting the approval of a proposal for Bristol County ARPA funding in the amount of two million dollars for the youth initiative proposal proposed by Council of Washington.
Motion approved made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Pereira, any discussion? Councilor in seat seven, Councilor Poso?
So, a few, a few things I want to kind of break down here, um, and I had spoken to Council Washington about this, as far as the scope of what it's looking to accomplish, and, and I mentioned to her, not only gyms and, and boxing studios and what have you, but I'm looking at nonprofit sports opportunities, for example, local league or local leagues that may not get any public funding, federal funding, that could also be included in this, um, because I can think of, you know, off the top of my head, that will allow kids to play, they don't have the money to play, but they'll get to play, but then the problem is then presented that the league can't improve, can't make improvements, because they don't get that money that, that's the only money that comes in, outside of, you know, their own fundraising. So, I would like to, if possible, add to this a little bit, to include some language, uh, in reference to, um, local sports leagues or local nonprofit youth organizations that don't already get, um, other funding, that could also be a, a benefit of this.
Do you want to make that amendment now, Councilor, or would you like to hear from the...
I, I would like to hear from my colleagues.
Thank you. Do you yield for that?
I yield.
Councilor in seat eight, Councilor Washington.
So, it, it is in the proposal, a business, so, there, you, as you've seen tonight, there were a lot of gyms here tonight, but, um, I've spoken with many other businesses, as you see, who came in late because he was waiting for all of his kids to come, was school committee member Bobby Bailey. Bobby runs, um, a nonprofit organization in this city, who, it moved me, and it compelled me to even push this even further, when I seen the work that he's doing with this blacktop basketball league, hundreds of kids, all being funded by local people with no funding, and, you know, he's, where is his money going to come from? When I tell you, that was Fall River to me, the essence of Fall River was on that blacktop league with those hundreds of kids and those parents that are the ones trying to get their kids there and keep it together, and, um, so, yes, when we're talking about businesses, we're talking about all types of business, nonprofits, for-profits, anybody that is doing the work of our kids. You know, I've talked with Yah, who, um, does art work with, um, at-risk youth all the time, and it does, you know, paints things all over the city, um, they'd be eligible for this frac. Um, TJ's Music, that, you know, there's so many, I, I talked with Artistic Dance Studios, so it's not just, um, these gyms, although I am a believer, as a, you know, psychotherapist in what is happening here, um, it is, it's in there, when we talk about businesses, it's, it will be able to be for all of these businesses that are serving our young people, so I hope that answers your question, I'll yield there.
So, there is no restrictions?
No, no.
On here, I know it, it does, um, Councilor Poso, it does give several examples, music, dance, boxing, martial arts?
Yeah.
Other possible classes?
Ju, just point of clarification.
Yes.
I think, to me, it's just, it, it's in the language itself is what I'm reading, I just read small businesses, I read a gym, a, a music studio, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not picking this apart, I'm just saying that I don't want, eh, like, a local nonprofit sports league, or whatever it may be, be excluded because it's not really defined in this.
You mean, like, a little league, give me an example?
Yeah, yeah, something like that, or even like, um, school committee member Bailey's, you know, program, same situation, it's not necessarily a, a small business, per se, so it doesn't really fit that explanation. So, I, I'm just looking to add a little more to it, so this way it opens up the opportunity, that's all.
Thank you. Councilor in seat six, Councilor Pereira.
No, I thought that it was for any organization that had dealings with youth, be in it, but if you want, amend it to any and all opportunities for the youth. You can amend.
Yeah.
You know, if you want to do that, just amend the proposal to include any and all opportunities for youth.
Yes.
I'll, I'll make that in the form of an amendment to attach to the proposal.
Second.
So, are you, the, would that be under the description of proposal? Councilor Poso, is that what you were reading?
Yeah. Yep. And then, and then obviously changing the description would then modify a little bit of the rationale behind it, it's, it's kind of repetitive, but it would have to be adjusted, so, um, something along the lines of, um, provide scholarship opportunities specializing in music, dance, boxing, mixed martial arts, and other possible classes, or sports, while supporting small businesses and/or nonprofits.
I think that says it. And I think that says it, there's no reason to amend it, that really says it.
No, but it doesn't, that's the thing.
No, that's what, it doesn't say that, it just says, um, businesses, small businesses offering the classes, you're looking for the nonprofit piece?
Correct.
And the sports piece.
Is that what you're adding?
Yes.
Motion to amend.
Motion to amend made by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Reposo, any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, did you get that amendment?
Yes.
And in, do you want in both places, Council Reposo, or just in the description of the proposal?
Yes, in both, please.
Do you yield, Council Pereira?
I do.
Um, Council Vice President?
Yeah, I just have a few questions, um, who will be overseeing this, would be one of my questions, obviously, somebody has to have oversight, um, it's a significant amount of money, um, how was a two-million-dollar, uh, number arrived at, more out of curiosity than anything? And I know the ARPA committee has, has given funding to different initiatives involving arts and culture, children, there's a, uh, the newest one, I don't know if, we could waive the rules and have the ARPA director come down, um...
Do you want motion to waive the rules?
Motion to waive the rules.
Motion to waive the rules made by Council Vice President, for a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Reposo, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
He doesn't want to throw me to the wolves yet.
Don't worry, I'm going to go easy on you this time.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, I appreciate that, I, I need a break on some more.
Yeah, um, because I know we do, there are initiatives, and there's people, I mean, we've had dance studios that have received funding, we have now the, the, um, chamber with the students, the twenty...
Yes, yep.
So, I know there's different initiatives, different programs, so, I'm just looking in terms of duplicating, if by, you know, if there's any, any chance of that, we're duplicating, or not duplicating, what your opinion is on that, and, um, and I'm sure you have insight into how the two-million-dollar, uh, number would be arrived at.
Yep, so, as to duplication, we actually had this conversation because we can't duplicate funds that are federally funded, so for instance, like, the recreation organization, so anything that they're doing, we wouldn't duplicate that because, uh, we can't. Um, so, that was primarily why we looked at, um, programs that they don't have, um, and so, we would be, we'd make sure that anything that we offered would not be duplicative of federally, other federally funded, um, projects.
So, it could be two arts and culture, uh, initiatives, but they'd be, they have to do different work, or you can't even do that, because I know there's mention of arts, you know?
So, so, we can do that, it's more when the, we're, like, recreation is being funded federally, by, um, and so, we wouldn't be able to be duplicative of the work that they're doing.
Okay.
Um, but we could also, we're, we've talked about running it in tandem with recreation, so that when you ta, asked about the coordination, that perhaps we could bring recreation in to help coordinate this, and then we would offer classes that they didn't. Um, and so, what it would work, we envision this, and we're still discussing, obviously, some of the specifics, but, um, there would be like an application process, so, going to your point, Councilman Reposo, um, we would, anyone could apply, I mean, certainly, that was our intention to, you know, I mean, I would go so far as saying, like, cooking classes, you know, if children wanted to do that, and there was a company or a nonprofit that, or an individual who offered those opportunities, that would be something that they could apply to, uh, there would be somebody that would be approving that application, um, and then we would roll out, uh, scholarship opportunities for that as well.
But I think that also brings us to the question of an oversight, because you asked who might, who might administer the program. Rather than depending on organizations to find us, one of the things that Councilor Washington had talked about early on is a coordinator that would actually go out and recruit programs, um, and so, you know, it's this constant balance engaging the interest and, and what the interest is and where it lies, and then making sure that we have programs that are actually meeting those interests. Um, so, you know, that person would be somebody who is in the community, who knows the community, who already has some relationships, and is the kind of person that's going to go out and, and find others, to basically recruit as many, um, whether it's nonprofits, organizations, or small businesses, um, as we can to be involved in this.
And just to add to that as well, um, going to sort of like sustainability in the long term, um, it was Councilor Washington's idea to, um, you know, to have that coordinator term, it was Counselor Washington's idea to, you know, to have that coordinator also work on bringing in funding that would be, like, allowed down the road, like, fundraising, funding sources, donations, et cetera.
So part of this funding would be to pay that person's salary? It wouldn't be somebody that would do it on a volunteer basis, I can't imagine.
Theoretically, that would be part of the $2 million, which is how I think that that number came about, is that we thought, okay, we'd have to, you know, probably pay somebody, you know, hard to say what that looks like, you know, until you're looking at how many different organizations you're dealing with, how many hours, and who that person would be, and all this other stuff. But, yeah, that was certainly contemplated. And, you know, this is one of those circumstances where it would be critically important for this to have a life after ARPA. And so it would essentially give that person two or three years where they didn't have to be fundraising, to be developing the fundraising mechanism. So that once the ARPA money is gone, they're already well on their way to being self-sustaining. And that has to be an important part of this, because you can't just do two years of something wonderful and then be like, yeah, it's all done, can't do it anymore. You can't do that.
Right, right.
Because it's too important, I think, for the mental health and well-being of kids. I mean, I have three sons, like, I saw what COVID was like, you know, especially, you know, I don't want to distinguish boys, but like, boys who are, you know, very physical, very active, very whatever, to be like, you know, on a screen, you know, distance learning, you know, every day was a nightmare. And so to not have that be sustainable would be really a crime. And so that's why we did contemplate that coordinator having, you know, that few years of breathing room to understand how to fundraise, how to create the entity that would, you know, have funds and support even after ARPA is done. And then finally, that gets us to your question, how do we arrive at the $2 million? I think it's really important to note that in every ARPA contract, there is no obligation to spend the entire amount.
Right.
So, you know, like, we've talked about with some of the ones in the City ARPA, you know, they ask for a certain amount, but there's all sorts of benchmarks built into the contract to say, okay, you start with this, get to these benchmarks, and then you get here, and then you get here. And so, and if those aren't reached and we're not developing something successful, we're not going to wait till we spent the entire amount of money to determine that it wasn't successful, you know, that money could get turned back. So I think, you know, the $2 million is sort of a maximum given, a lot of programs, a lot of kids, just to make sure we had the room to do it.
Okay. So we talk a lot about working together, compromise, et cetera. So I guess my next question would be, you know, I put in the resolution for the $11 million for the water department. If I said I don't have a problem amending mine to $10 million, use a million of Bristol County funding for this initiative, and the administration use a million dollars of theirs, match the Bristol County, so that we could do it all?
You want to speak, Kelly, or you want me to? I can't commit, so I wouldn't be able to, as you know, because we have a committee, I couldn't commit to city money. I also want to make note of the fact that Counselor Perera has a really worthwhile proposal for the skating rink, which I think would allow us to test the waters, or the ice, as the case may be, to see if that is a viable thing next winter. It includes all of the different things we need to consider to make sure that that was a real test and that we understood if it's going to work and if it would drop people in, if it would have leagues and hockey games and all sorts of things. So I would, I wouldn't want to miss that in our conversation about how we might compromise.
Well, I believe there's enough change for the skating rink.
Fair enough.
Because it was 16-point, I forgot the exact number on the, and we only spent four in change, which left 11 in change, so I think, I think it would all be workable and doable.
So, I'm sorry. So 2.325 million is the total cost of Counselor Washington's proposal as well as Counselor Perera's proposal? $2 million plus $325,000?
Right.
Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
So $1,325,000 out of Bristol County, $10 million for water, a million from the administration for Counsel Washington's for the other half, and everybody could be happy.
So I am all about the spirit of compromise. But because I can't speak to City ARPA money tonight, I would urge the council to propose whatever compromise it might, and I would very much appreciate that. And, you know, even if it comes down to, you know, urging the city money, you know, some additional city money to go towards whether it's water, or whether it's skating, or whether it's youth, I mean, whatever that is, I can commit to you that I would advocate to the mayor to do that, but I can't promise that that would happen, right? The committee has to vote on it. So that's as much as I can say now about that, because I just don't want to make promises I can't keep.
No, I understand that. I know that you can't.
But I really do appreciate your willingness to compromise so much. Thank you.
Yeah.
Because it's, these are tough calls.
Yeah.
There's a lot of really good things that we're trying to do.
Yeah. But I, and I did clearly hear you earlier say that there was definitely not going to be any money given to the water department, so.
Well, I didn't say there wouldn't be any, but I said there's already been, you know, 15% of the total amount to the water department, which is quite a bit. There's also other things coming in, so there's a lot of money there, and I just, we just want to spread it around, because there's some real needs in the city, as we all know. You know, I'm preaching to the choir here. You guys get calls every day from constituents that have real, honest, good needs, and we want to, I think, collectively try to address those as well as we can.
And if I could just say something?
Yes, please.
I don't know if I'll, you know, get in trouble. But, you know, I did just start two months ago, and so I think that one thing that concerns me is that I'm finally taking an active role and we have a point person on this. And, you know, I know a lot of people have visited my office to talk to me and sit down, and so I feel like we're just getting to this point of some really creative ideas and opportunities. And I just want, like, the council to understand that we don't have a timeline right now with Bristol County Treasury. So we have, you know, we have until 2000, December of 2024, to apply and to make decisions. And so my concern is if, and I'm not saying that, you know, I don't think the water is important, that's certainly not what I'm saying, but I do feel like if we just spend that big chunk of money right now on these projects, we're losing these opportunities for each and every one of you to really think outside the box and to come up with some ideas that really can make a difference for this, for the citizens in this city. And I think that just, I feel like I'm just starting, and there's these opportunities, and if we just kind of, like, just tonight, just decide this is all going to this one big thing, we haven't all had this opportunity to really sit down and put our minds together and come up with something really powerful, so.
I guess for me, the other side of that coin is that there's essentially $50 million that's still there to do all of that with.
And fair enough.
And that's my sticking point.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm not, I'm just, I'm just saying that as the newer person on board.
So with that, I yield.
Thank you. Attorney, could you just clarify? You said that there would be a position and a cost, and the cost would come out of the $2 million. Is that a position that's going to have to be created in ordinance? How does that?
No, so ARPA does actually provide for certain administration costs to be part of the proposals. So it wouldn't be a position created in ordinance, it would be a position similar to Kara's position that is authorized by ARPA, that has certain, you know, connection with the city, but at the end of the day is an ARPA-funded position that would not appear on the OR chart.
Okay, thank you. Counselor in seat eight, Counsel Washington.
I'll yield to Counselor C2.
Counselor in seat two, Counsel Per.
But we don't have to create that position. If people apply for it, they can run it. We don't have to create someone to.
No.
Right, so that's just if need be.
Yeah, if need be. Yeah, I mean, I think it probably makes sense to make sure there's oversight, there's recruitment, there's, you know, development, planning.
So I don't want people to think that we're going to be spending most of $2 million or $1 million somewhere.
No, absolutely not.
Let's not get too too carried away with that, but let me ask you a question. You said you've only been here for a couple of months. How much time do you think you would need to say to come back to us? Let's say we don't spend everything now and we leave a few million dollars there, and we'll support the project for the infrastructure to an extent, and we'll support the project of Perera, and we'll support the project that Counsel Perera put forward as well, if this council wants to do it, because we will do the compromising. We're not going to compromise this way, we're going to go this way through the President, this way. How much time do you think you would need to get a firm grip on where we can spend future ARPA money?
I already have a couple of ideas for the September 13th meeting, so.
Is it fair to say if we give you three months, four months, you can come back?
Yeah, and so I think, I also don't want you to be mistaken that this is, I want you guys to have this opportunity.
I get it. What I'm saying is, if you're saying there's other things you have ideas for, then you're right, we shouldn't spend it all now, right? Let's spend what we'd like to spend getting some of these projects taken care of and getting some money towards the water and sewer, which I support. Then maybe we should save some money to see what your ideas are, and it doesn't mean that if we don't like your ideas or any other ideas you present.
And when I say my ideas, I really mean anything that you want.
I mean, people you've talked to and us, exactly. I don't mean you.
Yeah.
I get it.
I have some, though.
I'm sure you do. But I'm sure if you talk to other people, they might present other ideas, why other ideas might be presented to you now that people are aware of what's going on and how much money is available? You don't know, right?
Correct.
So maybe we should just slow down a little bit and give you a couple of months, three months, to come back and say, okay, you know what, maybe this is best purpose to put it all through water and sewer, or like you were going to do before, or some portion of it additionally. And maybe you might say, we have these projects now, we might want to be interested in funding. So what do you need, three months, four months, five months?
I think, I think three, if I were to say. And I would also just say to you, I'm telling you this, but honestly, if you vote on one thing, it makes my life easier, because I just do one application process.
I get it, I get it.
So I'm putting what's best for myself aside, because I really do want you all to have a chance to bring things forward.
Because I think in fairness, right, I think maybe, and I'm just throwing this out there, my amendment would be put six, $6 million to the infrastructure, maybe five or six, put $2 million towards the youth initiative, and put Counsel Perera's money in there, well, she needs, I think, what, $400,000?
$325,000.
$325,000.
$325,000. And then we'll have.
But four would make sure the ice was really cold.
Yeah. And then we'll have a few million dollars left over that we could put to other things that might come up, and if we don't agree with the other alternatives, then we can put it back into the infrastructure and go that way. Is that fair to compromise? If you thought you held, yes, I don't know something.
$7?
Six.
It started at $11,000.
Yeah, it started at $100,000, let's be reasonable. It wasn't that much. So I think that's fair enough, right? And then it's getting late, and I know, you know, we want to get, go on with the rest of the council meeting, and I think that's a very fair proposal, and I hope my colleagues would agree to that, and we'll make the amendment that Mr. Repose, Counsel Repose wants to put into that as well. And I think it's always been my opinion that we're going to include as much youth organizations involved as possible, not going to exclude them. Maybe someone wants to put a hula hoop class together, all for it. All right? So with that, I think I've said enough again. I yield, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Counsel Per.
You know, I have talked to Kara, I should say, Miss Ham, about.
Or Ham, but you can call me Ham if you want.
About different kinds of things. And one of them is, we have those flashing stop signs that are solo-operated, and we couldn't give that to the traffic department, but those really work. And, you know, so let's put a little bit of money into getting some of those done, especially around schools and things like that. Another thing is, it drives me crazy that you have, down where the picnic area is, to the right of it, it's all open. Why don't we put a soccer field there? Put some benches, have a little stadium. There's no houses down there, there's parking down there, you could have concerts on it. Do things. Do things that the community can enjoy. And then you have leagues that come in, traveling leagues, they stay in our hotels, they eat here. It's like, those are the kinds of things. Why do we have to go out of town to do things? And then I talked to Council President yesterday about an area that she's interested in where people could access fishing. That'll cost about $100,000, $100,000 to do that, and people have a place to go. I went by there today and checked it out. That's easy to do that, and that's volunteer.
She's going to give us those ideas three months from now.
I know. I mean, I talk to her all the time.
Got an open-door policy.
And she's very, very good to talk to and tell you when, you know, she thinks you're crazy and when she thinks you're right. And I appreciate that.
Thanks.
But with that, I yield. I can think of a million things I would do.
Thank you. Counselor in seat eight, Counsel Washington.
I just wanted to answer some of the questions that were asked by my colleagues. One of them would be how I came up with the $2 million. I originally wanted to do a lot more than that, but I wheeled myself back, and I did actually, I reached out to a lot of the places that were here, places that weren't here. What does it cost a month to keep a child in your program or scholarshiping them? And they're expensive, so, and there's a lot of these programs. I talked to nonprofit agencies, you know, how much does it cost to fund what you're doing? And it's a lot of money. I was worried that $2 million wasn't enough, but I figured it's enough to get started when you're looking at some of these gyms and what they do for these kids. And it's not just like an hour a week. Many of these kids are going to these programs every night, on weekends. We're looking at, you know, a child paying some $50 a month to $125 a month, depending on the program, and what does it cost to keep these leagues running? So that's how I came up with the $2 million funding. I asked them to send me a budget, or what their cost expenses are, what that looks like, what does it look like for a child just to start? So if you're going to do a jujitsu class, what does it cost for the gi? And I purposely put in there that it, just not for low-income housing. Our middle class, our working class here in Fall River are being tasked with, do I pay my mortgage, do I enroll my kid in something that they need? It literally is a service for all kids, not just low-income need. This is for our working class that are having to make these difficult decisions. And so, and on the other side of this, it also is helping the small businesses that have been tasked with taking care of our children in this community. They have been decimated by COVID. They had to shut down, they didn't have funding, and yet when they open back up, they're scholarshiping these kids and trying to. You heard Mike from Infinite Fitness saying, like, we had to, like, say, like, oh, someone else is paying for this, even though they're not, because the floodgates couldn't open to help all these kids. And you look at Jason Hall, who's going to Villanova, he's a Fall River kid that needed some help. I mean, it's moving, and I don't want to get too carried away, because I can get carried away, but I'm a psychotherapist, a lot of people know that. If you don't, that's what I do for work. I know the havoc that COVID reached on our youth. Suicide is up, depression is up, at amounts that you can't even imagine. I hear it every day. And to get into therapy and psychiatry, we're talking months, if not a year, to get into these appointments. And this is from a psychotherapist, some of these programs are better than therapy and medication. And so this is an impact that, this is what changes a community, this is what prevention is, and we're not only helping thousands of youth, but also these small businesses that we can now alleviate some of the stress from and help them stay afloat. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat one, Counsel King.
Thank you. So I'm just going to get on my soapbox a little bit here, and I just want to remind folks, like, I'm supportive of the compromise, I'm supportive of the $2 million. I'm supportive of you coming back with some ideas. However, what I will say is that if we're going to start talking about adding recreational infrastructure, you know, we've got to start talking about the infrastructure we currently have and we fail to maintain, right? I keep saying this every time we go through a budget. We have roughly $2,000 allotted per park, right? And we're going to allot $2 million for these programs, which are great, but yet we've got land that folks can access and we're not maintaining it, right? So free access to our parks that are just not where they need to be. So I'm going to support the $2 million, but I think from an administration standpoint, we need to start investing, bumping up the budget.
We do have several, sorry.
Oh, no, it's okay. Just bumping up, and I've been saying this year over year with parks and wrecks when we, when we look at the budget. And then if you're going to start, if we're going to start talking about this, I also want to know, similar to the buyer reserve, what's the long-term maintenance, right? Because not only does it come with, you know, the maintenance, like, we're getting this funding, but we've got to maintain it. And then man-hours, what are the man-hours to maintain this? Do we have enough DBW? Do we have enough parks and wrecks? we have enough DBW? Do we have enough parks and recs? There's a lot that goes into this, and it's nice that we're throwing money. But I want to make sure that we understand the, the grand picture of, grand scheme of everything that's going on. Because right now, we've got infrastructure that we're not maintaining, right? Because we're not, we, we just don't have the budget for it, and we don't want to increase, you know, taxes above two and a half percent. So I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. So when, when we're going to support this and invest in it, it, it comes with the long-term maintenance costs associated with that. So with that, I, I support the compromise. I, I think it's something that we should do. I, I support the resolution that's before us for the two million dollars. And I, I think, just, I mean, I don't know that we needed to hear the stories, but just for the average person to see these families come before us and, and really see the impact that some of these programs are having on, on our youth in the city is, is really telling. So I, I think we all want to support this. So I just want to move forward with it. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilman, seat three, Council Vice President.
I guess I'm going to do a little bit of an infomercial here. As I sat here tonight listening, I thought to myself, I wonder how many of these people, like the gym, like the people on this side, as strange as it may sound to some, really aren't aware of the money that they can get from B C E C D because of being impacted by COVID, that they can make the phone call to, depending on the number of employees they have, recover twenty-five hundred to five thousand dollars. And I don't know how many of, I hate to say regular businesses, but regular businesses. You know, you have people, they just go along in their daily life. They're not necessarily in tune, and they're not necessarily hearing that there is relief money for these businesses who were affected by COVID. So I just want to bring that out. Because a lot of people watch the city council meeting. So maybe there's somebody out there watching this meeting who doesn't know about that, which will also is, will be a help to them. And if they lost some, you know, business along the way, some, some kids along the way, well, now you might be able to recover twenty-five hundred, five thousand dollars. Or maybe they would choose to take that five thousand and say, hey, listen, you know, I get this five thousand, maybe I'll bring four kids on that I know can't afford it, and I'm just going to let them come, give them a scholarship so they can box for a year. So with that, I'm going to throw out the phone number for Ken Fiola, which is five oh eight, three two four, two six two oh, for anyone who doesn't know.
You memorized that?
I memorized that. I memorized that today. And Mr. Ferland, six million enough to do one full project?
Yes.
With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the council?
Four million.
Councilor in seat seven, Council Reposa.
Yeah, I, I guess the question threw you to, to my colleagues on both sides of me at this point. Could these, both these projects be, go through the ARPA Committee of the City as well? Is it only just, I, I don't want to make this sound terrible, but I almost think that this is like the path of least resistance.
Oh, I disagree.
Like, I'm, I'm, but, but, hold on. Let me, let me finish my statement. Because I'm curious, the process that the city ARPA committee goes through, right, is it similar to like how this functions as far as like conversation and then agreeance and then we get to the end?
Yes. So, yes. So the, the way it goes is, you know, I review an application, I review it with the mayor, I send it to the ARPA Advisory Committee, we have a meeting, someone presents from who's making that application proposal, they field questions, sometimes they're definitely on the hot seat, and they're excused, the committee discusses, and then a motion is made, and then seconded, and either approved or not approved.
Okay.
And I would say, after sitting here tonight, I think this is much more challenging.
Nothing.
So I, I would say this is not the path of least resistance.
That's fine. I'm, I'm just, because again, you know, as far as how that operation works, I mean, I know from the beginning, I asked the question of, you know, where do the ideas come from? How does this committee function? What have they talked about? And we've had this conversation, Seth and I have had this conversation. It was kind of like, okay, we're going to wait a while, and then you finally gave it to us, which was great.
Yeah.
So like, now I'm just, I'm kind of going back to, you know, if the city has a lot of this, a lot more ARPA money, right, and we're looking for future opportunities, could the city possibly consider some of these projects as well?
I, so yes, they could. I think the other part I would just add is that it's also picking the right projects to, I mean, because we, I have, once, once the council approves something, I go through a whole application process with the Bristol County Treasury. So they do a risk assessment with, with the city. It's a three-person or group review for approval. So I mean, it is, so I think projects that are coming down here, are proposals, I should say, are ones that, you know, we feel like do have a lot of traction. And it's also, I think, again, it's more of an opportunity for each of you, you know, to sort of present in front of your constituents something really valuable and sort of get credit for that. I mean, so I think that we are fielding proposals from community stakeholders, nonprofits, departments. But I think this is a really opportunity for you all individually to sort of shine, you know, and bring something that you feel like is really important for, for your constituents. So yes, the answer, the, the short answer is yes, it can absolutely go before our committee. I think we're just trying to, the mayor's trying to give you all an opportunity to come up with some ideas.
So essentially, it's just the path that was chosen to go down this way versus the other way?
Yeah, I mean, yes.
Very much like the other seven proposals that were kind of put in front of us, say, hey, here's an opportunity for you guys to, you know, like you just said, shine and use the Bristol County ARPA money versus the city saying, sure, we'll do it ourselves.
Yes. Or, like, in, for these instances, this was like, Councilwoman, Counselor Washington's, I mean, that was her idea. She came, you know, to us with that proposal, same with the ice skating rink. You know, so it's, it's not just, you know, us coming to them, it's you each coming to us.
But the short answer is it could go either way.
It could.
Okay. That's all you had to know. Thank you, you yield.
Thank you. Anything further?
No, thank you so much.
We have it amended? We have a motion to approve as amended?
There was a motion in a second on-
On the amendment, yeah, we didn't-
From Council Reposa.
On the amendment. Do we have a motion to approve as amended? That was just on the amendment? Or do we already have that amendment?
Have the motion to amend.
We have the motion to amend, so we need a, a motion to approve as amended, correct?
Mm-hmm. So motion to approve as amended? Did we, did we take the vote on the amendment?
We took the vote on the amendment.
No, I think we took a, a, just, we had a, the, the amendment in a second, we didn't have a vote. Aye.
On the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion to approve as amendment made by Council Reposa?
Second.
Seconded by Council Kadeem. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item number six is the mayor's request in an order accepting a gift of a hundred dollars for the library from Helen Schultz in memory of her sister Catherine Rocha.
Motion adopted.
Motion adopted made by Council Kadeem, seconded by Council Pereira. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item seven is the mayor's communication in an order accepting a gift of weekly take-home crafts from children at the full, at the public library from Richard and Debbie Danner, valued at a hundred dollars per week.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Motion adopted made by Council Reposa, seconded by Council Vice President Dion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item eight is a communication from the mayor in, in order accepting a gift of forty dollars for the public library from Joseph Lynch and Diane Greer in memory of Mary Harrington.
Second.
Motion adopted made by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Reposa. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item nine is a communication from the mayor and the copies and orders that were approved by the Senate and House of Representatives, and, which were signed by Governor Baker, abolishing the Board of Fire Commissioners and Board of Police.
Motion to refer to the ordinance committee?
Motion to refer to the ordinance committee made by Council Vice President Dion.
Second.
Seconded by Council Kadeem. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, Councilman, seat six, Council Pereira.
Wasn't that already an ordinance? Because I put in a resolution about it. The ten years the Board of Fire Commissioners don't meet and they're getting paid two thousand five hundred dollars, the same thing with the police, they never met.
This went before, this was a special act to abolish, so now we need to, this is basically housekeeping. Now we need to just strike it from the ordinances.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
No problem.
Anything further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item ten is the mayor's communication and the memorandum of agreement between the City of Fall River and the Environmental Police.
Motion adopted.
Second.
Motion adopted made by Council Kadeem, seconded by Council Pereira. Any discussion? Councilman, seat three.
Yeah, I just have a question. What is the financial impact of that?
I believe there was an impact statement.
Do you want to refer to finance? But typically, we refer these to finance, right, Madam President? So-
Yes.
Okay, I will refer to finance then.
Just-
Motion to refer to finance?
Yes.
Do we have a second? Motion to refer to finance made by Council Dion?
I guess, second, yeah, I'm sorry. I thought you were taking off.
Seconded by Council Kadeem. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item eleven is a communication from the mayor and a TIF agreement for Blount, a TIF agreement amendment for Blount Fine Foods Corporation and Blount Realty located at 630 Current Road.
Motion adopted as amended.
We're going to withdraw that. I apologize.
Motion grant leave to withdraw.
Second.
Motion grant leave to withdraw made by Council Kadeem, seconded by Council Vice President Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item twelve is a communication from the mayor in orders to accept grants.
Motion to adopt grants A through E. Second.
Motion adopt grants A through E after reading made by Council Kadeem, seconded by Council Reposa. Any discussion? Councilman, seat three, Council Vice President?
Yeah, there, I noticed that there were some matching, some matches required. So the funding's coming from where to the Mass Trails is, oh, no, that one's set. Twenty-five percent for the dam repair from local funding, Watupon Pond, twenty-five percent, the C S O, twenty-five percent. There's a twenty-five percent match on all three of those.
Would you like to send it to finance? Or would you like, uh-
Dion, make a-
Second.
Motion to send to finance made by Council Vice President Dion, seconded by Council Kadeem. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Item thirteen is a communication from the Board of Election Commissioners in an order authorizing the polling places for the state primary election on September sixth and the state election on November eighth.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion adopted made by Council Vice President Dion, seconded by Council Washington. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item fourteen is a communication from the Board of Election Commissioners in an order regarding the designation and the assignment of police officers for Election Day.
Motion to adopt.
Motion adopted made by Council Vice President Dion, seconded by Council Pereira. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item fifteen was the communication from the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee and their request to present their update of accomplishments.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion adopted made by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Reposa. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item sixteen is the Traffic Commission recommending amendments to the traffic ordinances.
Second.
Motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinances made by Council Kamara, seconded by Council Vice President Dion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item seventeen is the Police Chief's communication regarding the off-duty lifesaving actions of EMT Luke Farrell.
Motion accepted and placed on file made by Council Kamara, seconded by Council Reposa. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on August ninth voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance accompanied by an emergency preamble be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled, and passed to be ordained with Councilors Kilby and Reposa absent and not voting. This is a handicapped parking ordinance.
Motion for emergency preamble. Second.
Second.
Motion for emergency preamble made by Council Kadeem, seconded by Council Reposa. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
You need roll call for emergency.
Roll call on the preamble.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
On the emergency preamble, Councilors Kadeem?
Yes.
Kamara?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Reposa?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And President Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Motion adopted. Second.
Motion passed through all readings made by Council Kadeem, seconded by Council Reposa. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yep.
Any opposed? So voted.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on August ninth voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance accompanied by emergency preamble be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled, and passed to be ordained as amended with Councilors Kilby and Reposa absent and not voting. This is the ordinance that relates to prohibited parking at all times on Atlantic Boulevard.
Motion for emergency preamble.
Motion adopted emergency preamble made by Council Vice President Dion, seconded by Council Kadeem. Any discussion? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
On adoption of the emergency preamble, Councilors Kadeem?
Yes.
Kamara?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Reposa?
Yes.
Washington? Yes. And President Lullaby LeBeau? Yes.
Motion to pass through all readings?
Second.
Motion to pass through all readings made by Council Vice President Dion, seconded by Council Pereira. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on August ninth voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading as amended with Councilors Kilby and Reposa absent and not voting. This is a miscellaneous traffic ordinance.
Second.
Motion passed through first reading made by Council Kilby, seconded by Council Kadeem. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
We take twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three together.
Second.
Motion to take items twenty-one through twenty-three together made by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Kilby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Oh. Your questions on those counselors?
Yeah, on twenty-two and twenty-three.
Madam Clerk, item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one. Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on August ninth voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed resolution be granted leave to withdraw with Councilors Kilby and Reposa absent and not voting. This is a resolution that related to unregistered motorbikes traveling on city streets.
Motion to adopt.
Motion adopted.
Grant leave to withdraw, sorry.
Grant leave to withdraw made by Council Vice President Dion.
Second.
Seconded by Council Kilby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on August ninth voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed resolution be granted leave to withdraw with Councilors Kilby and Reposa absent and not voting. This was the resolution to require city council approval for any stipend exceeding two thousand dollars.
Motion to adopt.
Councilor, seat one, Councilman Kadeem?
I, I guess before you adopt, just because then you can't have any discussion with grant leave to withdraw. So the reason for both items, twenty-two and twenty-three, just quickly, I know we're only on twenty-two, but I had submitted, I had submitted the resolution to require that any stipends in the amount of two thousand dollars would be required to approve, city council approval. Corporation Council came down, while I slightly disagree with him. The reason for the ordinance came back from the past administration trying to really abuse stipends and circumventing city ordinance with salaries. Corporation Council basically said that it's somewhat, or not somewhat, that he feels like it's outside of the legislative body's jurisdiction and that it really truly falls on the executive branch. So without trying to really push the issue and, and given that it was the prior administration and we haven't seen any, any examples of any type of misuse or issuing of stipends that we're trying to circumvent it, that I, I personally agree to do a grant leave to withdraw, which is why I think the other committee members did that as well. I did also state, though, if, if we've come to a situation where we're finding that, you know, there are stipends that are giving, are being given in, in a sense in for compensation for salary as opposed to a temporary service that's being provided because they're filling in for somebody, that we would definitely revisit the situation. So that was that issue. So I'll, I'll hold off on that.
Do you yield, Councilor? Councilman, seat six, Council Pereira?
I had concerns when I first saw that it was leave to withdraw, but then I watched the meeting and understood why it was given. That resolution was filed by Steve Long in two thousand seventeen. So that's how long it's been sitting there. And the next one, on the collective bargaining and get a cost analysis, I think, Council Kadeem had said that at one of the last meetings we had. So if those things are being done, that was why they gave a leave to withdraw. Thank you.
Do you? I yield. Anything further, Council? Vice President?
Yes, I guess it's a point of information, actually. So the fact that the resolution was given leave to withdraw, and I voted on it, and then this was kind of an afterthought. I mean, you have to have the cost analysis. We have to know exactly what the appropriation is. So if Brad, they bring down a contract, because I mean, we have to determine, does the budget substantiate, or does, or does the price of the contract, can it be substantiated within our budget? So are we saying that that's going to be in the paperwork when, when the contracts come down? Because I don't think in this MOU, I'm understanding or seeing the dollar amount of, of what that contract is going to mean. So I think that's where the sticking point is in the resolution. I mean, and I'll defer to seat one, if you'd like to, with that, I yield.
So I-
Councilman, seat one.
Thank you, Madam President. So I didn't realize we were going to, to the next one, Resolution twenty-three. So I had filed, I had filed that Corporation Council essentially came down again suggesting that we do not put this in ordinance, Chapter one fifty-E, which really kind of dictates the collective bargaining purpose and has some stipulations in there that requires it to come down before the city council. He also referenced the city charter where we are required to, or have the ability to request information for any items that come down before us, that he suggested that we file a resolution if file a resolution if we do not get it. I was in support of doing a grant to leave to withdraw on this item because the administration has done a phenomenal job with the last couple of contracts submitting us the information that we were requesting, so a breakdown per year and a total cost over the, you know, assuming it was a three-year contract over the three years, so we knew what the financial implications were if we approved the first year. So assuming that we continue to do that, I don't really think there's a need to, to get it into ordinance to dictate that as long as the administration does continue to, to provide that. I think some of the breakdown was that, you know, there were, um, previous administrations that weren't submitting, uh, these collective bargaining agreements down to the City Council, and the City Council just wasn't sure, uh, what they were approving. We would just get an MOUs, MOAs without any real understanding that we were actually approving the funding mechanism and appropriation. So I think that's all been clarified. I think the Council is educated to that, so I think we don't really need to get this in ordinance. With that, I yield.
Anything further on item 22? Sorry.
Motion grant to leave to withdraw.
Motion to adopt grant leave to withdraw made by Counsel Kadim.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Washington. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor in seat seven opposed.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on August 9th voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed resolution be granted leave to withdraw with Counselors Kilby and Reposo absent and not voting. This is the resolution to require collective bargaining agreements include a cost analysis.
Motion to adopt the committee's report made by Counsel Kamara.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Perrera. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Counselor in seat three opposed? Counselor in seat seven opposed?
Whereas complaints have been received regarding odors emanating from the wastewater treatment plant, and whereas these odors prevent residents from enjoying their outdoor space, and whereas some equipment at the wastewater treatment plant is past its useful life, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs convene with the administrative community utilities to discuss this matter.
Motion to adopt.
Motion, sorry, I didn't hear who made the motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Motion adopted made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Kilby. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Whereas the American Rescue Plan Act allows for frontline city employees who worked through the COVID-19 pandemic to receive premium pay under federal guidelines, and whereas the administration is in the process of determining and calculating this premium pay, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Finance convene with the administration to discuss the timeline for the distribution of these funds.
Motion adopted made by Counsel Kilby. Is there a second?
I've just gotten a lot of calls, I've received a lot of calls from workers within the city, DCM, the Park Department, Police Department, et cetera, that, um, they're all questioning this premium pay. I know that the mayor is working on it, but at least if administration comes down and lets people know when do they think this is going to be resolved, who would get it, who wouldn't get it, what have you, uh, just, you know, I just think that when city workers, many of them got sick, um, got COVID, I remember even coming into the clerk's office and there were two people there, everybody else was all sick. If they're going to get the premium pay, at least let them know it's in the works. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat three, Counsel Vice President.
Yeah, um, I asked that question, and correct me if I'm wrong. The response was, we have a few more contracts we're settling. Once the last few contracts are settled, then the premium pays will be issued to everyone after that is completed. If I'm incorrect, please correct me.
And that, can I respond to that?
Do you yield, Counselor?
Do you yield?
Counsel Dionne, do you yield?
Okay.
Counselor in seat six, Counsel Perrera.
I've heard the same thing, but my issue is that the employees have a right to know what's the timeline. That's all. With that, I yield.
Counselor in seat one, Counsel Kadim.
Uh, thank you. I don't even believe this is within our jurisdiction. It's collective bargain agreement. We fund the collective bargain agreement. That's between the union and the administration. So if they want to get paid, if there's language in the collective bargaining, then file a grievance. That's my recommendation. Or have a conversation with the administration and find out when they're going to get paid if it's language that's in the collective bargain agreement. So, I mean, I'm just not going to support it. I, I support the, um, you know, the complaints that are coming in and wanting to find out what's going on. I think that's a conversation with the administration, whether it's HR or the city administrator to figure out what's, what's going on. But, I mean, I don't think we should be sending things that are outside our purview for collective bargain agreements. So, I yield.
Counselor in seat six, Counsel Perrera.
To Counsel Kadim, I don't think the premium pay is being put in the contracts when they negotiate them. I thought they're negotiating a contract on salaries and things like that, and the premium pay would be something later. Am I wrong?
No, so some of them were put in the collective bargaining agreements. Um, I believe the super, uh, superiors, police superiors is in there.
It's in the one.
In the police, superior. How about in the Park Department or DCM?
That I don't know.
That, if it's not in the contract, well, what do they have to wait till they get a contract to be able to find out if they're going to get a premium pay?
Yes. Or request impact bargain if their contract's still going on. I mean, that's, those are the options.
There's only one con, one left to do, that's the police officers.
Correct.
You know, the officers. I mean, I don't care if you support it or you don't support it, but I want the people that have called me to know I tried to figure out and get an answer for them, because I think everybody deserves answers. With that, I yield.
Anything further? Do you have a motion to adopt made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Perrera? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Counselor in seat one opposed?
Opposed.
Counselor in seat three opposed? Madam Clerk?
Whereas ice skating is a winter sport that is enjoyed by many residents, and whereas the weather is not always cooperative with maintaining ice for long periods of time, and whereas many youths and families enjoy this winter outdoor sport, now therefore be it resolved that the administration appropriate $325,000 of the Bristol County ARPA funds to install a community ice skating rink at Kennedy Park.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion adopted made by Counsel Kamara, seconded by Counsel Kadim. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Could we take item 49 out of order, please?
49?
Yes.
Okay.
Somebody would make that motion.
Motion to take item 49 out of order.
Motion to take item 49 out of order made by Counsel Reposo, seconded by Counsel Vice President Dionne.
Motion approved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll take it.
Just give it to Sean. Yeah, he'll pass them down.
Pass.
Madam Clerk, would you read that, please?
Yes. Item 49 was the Deputy Director of EMS requesting permission to hang and display banners, posters, and flags at Government Center for National Overdose Awareness Day to be held on August 31st.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion adopted made by Counsel Kamara, seconded by Counsel Reposo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item 27 is the citation for EMT Luke Farrell.
Motion to adopt. Motion adopted made by Counsel Kamara, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item 28 is the order granting permission to Mass Electric, Electric for the installation of approximately 19 feet of underground conduit on Hartwell Street.
Second.
Motion adopted made by Counsel Kamara, seconded by Counsel Kadim. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Have the order granting permission for the installation of approximately 344 feet of underground conduit on Pearl and Spring Streets for Mass Electric.
Motion to adopt.
Motion adopted made by Counsel Kamara, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Have the order granting permission to Mass Electric for the installation of approximately 40 feet of underground conduit on Pleasant Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion adopted made by Counsel Reposo. Seconded by Counsel Vice President Dionne. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Have the order granting permission to Romano Real Estate Trust for permission to store 34,000 gallons of gasoline and 6,000 gallons of diesel fuel at 323 Willamette County Boulevard.
Second.
Motion adopted made by Counsel Kamara, seconded by Counsel Kadim. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
The warrant for the state primary election.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion adopted made by Counsel Vice President Dionne, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
The warrant for the state primary election.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion adopted made by Counsel Vice President Dionne, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
We have the request of, um, town transportation for, um, additional vehi, uh, one additional vehicle.
Motion adopted.
Taxicab vehicle.
Motion adopted made by Counsel Kadim.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Pelletier. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
The police chief's report on licenses.
Motion adopted.
Second.
Motion adopted made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
I have an application for the renewal of an auto repair shop.
Motion adopted.
Second.
Motion adopted made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
The number of claims.
Motion to forward to Corporation Council.
Second. Motion to forward to Corporation Council made by Counsel Reposo, seconded by Counsel Kadim. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Motion to take items 37 to 40 together.
Second.
Motion to take items 37 through 40 together after reading made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Reposo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Clerk?
We have minutes of the planning board meetings held on June 8th and July 13th, and meetings of the zoning board held on June 9th and June 16th.
Motion adopted.
Second.
Motion adopted made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Reposo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to take items 41 to 47.
Second.
Motion to take items 41 through 47 together after reading made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adopt.
Madam Clerk?
And these are minutes of the, um, City Council minutes. This would be the public hearing held on July 12th. Committee on Finance held on June 15th and July 12th. Regular meeting of the City Council held on June 14th, June 28th, July 12th, and the special meeting held on June 15th.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion adopted made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Kadim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item 48 is a thank you card from the Pachico family.
Second.
Motion accepted and placed on file made by Counsel Kamara, seconded by Counsel Reposo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
And the last item is a notice of a public hearing from the Department of Public Utilities held on, to be held on August 18th.
Motion accepted and placed on file.
Motion accepted and placed on file made by Counsel Kadim.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
President, we do need a few signatures.
Sorry, Madam Clerk? We need a few signatures. We need a recess. Two-minute recess.